I would like to record the meeting.
That's fine, Dick. While we are connecting town business using remote participation via Zoom, we ask that those of you not recognized by the chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion of the moment, please mute your microphone. Okay, so welcome to everyone. And the first item that we have on our agenda is the open and close of the May 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. So this is administrative in nature. In the past, we have done different years, depending three weeks or four weeks for the warrant to remain open. And so it is being closed here by Kevin. For the purposes of ensuring that things just move along quickly and smoothly and that we have time working with KP, that it be a three-week duration that the warrant is open. And so the motion here is to open it today and then to close it on January 31st. So could I have a motion and then we could have discussion?
Motion to open the Town of Topsail Annual Town Warrant and Special Town Warrant today and to close same January 31st, 2022.
He had a time here, Dick, if the 4:00 PM for the close?
Oh, I'm sorry. And at 4:00 PM on January 31st, 2022.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I think Boyd, you beat Cam, but you're on mute. So we're gonna have to go with Cam as the second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay.
It's not quite three weeks.
Well, it's three weeks in a day.
We squeezed it in here. But hopefully over time, this is like a minimum minimum. Okay. Comment. That's it.
Yeah. Okay. All right. We'll move to roll call. Mr. Jackson, you're on mute. As Boyd looks for his button, Mr. Hook. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
His eye and Boyd, do we have your button?
Aye. I finally found out how to do it.
Okay, so you are an I?
I am an I.
Okay, great. Okay, terrific. All right. So our next item is moving right onto the button. So Kevin, if I could turn this over to you to get us started and then take us through, I see we have several of our department heads here to present today.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Boyd, for the opportunity to get into some more of the detail of our operating budget. Just really quickly, last few weeks, our department heads have been working very diligently in providing us with their fiscal 23 operating budgets. They were due two days before Christmas and during the week between Christmas and New Year's and into last week, Catherine Gabriel, our accountant, did some fantastic work working with the department heads to fine tune those budgets, ensure that they they met the requirements and to provide you and the FinCom and the community with our first version omnibus budget. And just just some of the highlights of that budget at a high level. Our guidelines were 0% increase on the other category. My understanding that's the at least the third time I've been here for three of those guidelines, believe that year before I was here. So it's four years of the 0% growth guideline for the town. On the other category, salaries and wages are exempt from that guideline as those are contractual or part of the personal bylaw. And so with those guidelines, we've presented a budget that is, if you look at just the town side, year over year, it's actually a 16, roughly a $16,000 reduction. And the reason for that, we have salary increases while the other category hasn't grown. We found some budgetary in the insurances, some ways to budget a little more aggressively and appropriately to offset some of those costs on the people cost. Beyond that, we have above guidance asked that amount to $474,937. That gets us to about a 3.6% year over year, all in for the town budget only increase in this proposed budget. We do have also the other three components of the budget, the elementary schools, the Masco budget and the Essex Tech budget. We've received the elementary schools preliminary budget. We have not seen the Mascanomic budget or Essex Tech at this time. But if they met guidelines and our budget didn't change at all, we'd be at roughly the 3.6% increase year over year as well. So that's sort of an overview of what the budget looks like as of today. We know that's going to change based on our process and our looking closely at our over asking guideline request. There's a number of things that we'll be looking at. There's there's some positions we'll talk about. We'll talk about some of those positions tonight. Also talk about it the next work session on the 20th with a number of other departments. Today, we have the police, the fire, we have Gary Wild's departments, including EPW, which is the Park and Cemetery and Highway, and then the town administrators and select board budgets to be presented this evening. And then the remaining departments will be looked at on the 20th, like I mentioned a second ago. But just to kind of wrap it all up, just again, a great thank you to the not only the department heads, but their staff who helped them with this effort to put together this budget. It's a solid budget. It's a it's a very good budget. A lot of really good people have looked over this, worked really hard on it. And we're very excited to be able to present it to the select board over the next two weeks and then pivot to the FinCom once we've gone through our process to review the budget further with them during our budget season. So that all being said, thank you for allowing me to kind of give an overview. But I am excited to have Chief Hovey lead off tonight to give an overview of the department operations and then a little bit about the budget and be available for questions as we go through the budget conversation or operation conversation as we go. And at this point, Madam Chair, if it's okay with you, I would like to hand this over to Chief Hovey to continue.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you, Kevin. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Town Administrator. Seems like we were just here. How quickly a year goes by. We're still feeling a lot of the similar challenges that we had in the past. But I am honored to be here this evening to present this FY23 budget. As we know, last year was a very tedious process where we dissected the budget. We reviewed three years of receipts and expenses to actually try to figure out this very complicated and confusing budget. It was my first time with presenting a budget to the finance committee and to the select board. We are thrilled to say that our numbers are projected to come in better than we appropriated for. And as everybody knows that I presented on May 24th, all the impacts that the police reform and the challenges that we faced, also facing the COVID that just won't go away. So we've had numerous challenges. But first and foremost, I want to thank Catherine Gabriel and the town administrator for their guidance and assistance in vetting our budget and guiding us through the process of presenting this evening. And also my staff of Captain Dan Bell and also Catherine Jackson and assisting me in putting these numbers together. So as we were talking about when we presented the the police reform impacts, everything that we talked about in that 24 slide presentation has actually come to fruition. We were moving forward with body cameras, which is going to have some increased financial implications on us. All administrative requirements that they suggested have actually come in, the hiring constraints, all the everything that we talked about. But what is what am I am glad to present this evening is that we were able to take our FY22, we were able to ratify a full-time police officer's contract, we were able to ratify the reserve officers' contract after three years. And with those ratification of those contracts, we increased the salaries and wages went up three and a half percent for the full timers. They also got an increase in their educational career incentives. And they also were able to negotiate 100% of their contractual shifts, a right of first refusal, that had significant impacts on our budget. The reserve officers negotiated an 8% increase along with getting a across-the-board uniform allowance with theirs. And I am extremely proud that we were able to absorb all of those increases and be able to actually project out an FY22 budget and actually come in, which we're projecting come in below appropriated. We were also to take those same numbers and move them into FY23 budget with a staffing pattern of of three offices during the daytime, two in the evening and two in the overnight. And we're still able to come in this year by presenting a budget that's about $12,000 under budget from last year. So again, we're not compromising public safety. We got creative in the way we manage the efficiency of this department, of how we staff, the utilization of our employees. And one example is why we have a 3-3-2-2 staffing is that Detective Gehagan is also a school resource officer. So in essence, he goes to the school two days a week and we don't have to backfill his shifts, which is saving 16 hours a week in backfills of overtime or reserve hours. He's also able to do his detective work where we don't have to backfill his detective shifts. Again, a savings. And then anytime he takes a day off, we do not have to backfill his shifts because he's an extra person on shift. So a lot of that has some significant savings. Also with him in the schools, he brings in a per diem rate of about $230 a day, which is about $17,400 a year for the 38 weeks of time that he is at the schools. So some of this isn't shown in our budget that we are actually bringing in revenue, nor do we project to be a profitable police department. But there are some, you know, money that goes into the general fund that does not reflect our true operations. All of our grant money comes in purchases of equipment, which lowers our operational other budget needs. We haven't purchased much equipment because we were able to do it either through capital or through grants. So I'm extremely pleased to be here this evening to actually provide a FY23 budget that comes in under our FY22 budget and actually run more efficiently than we've ever run before. And probably in my 24 years here, I have never seen the camaraderie and the morale higher than it is today, despite police reform and everything that's going on. When you look at what is happening with police departments, we've had 103 police chiefs retire in the last year. Police departments are extremely shorthanded. They cannot hire employees. There's not enough candidates out there. The candidates that think they want to be police officers, we're having about a 20% failure in the physical fitness requirements to join. Every police department is doing forced overtime for their officers, decreasing their morale. And we don't have any of those issues. It's sometimes embarrassing to go to chief meetings and hearing all the stories. And I actually want to stand up and say that we probably have the best police department in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We don't force our employees into work. They all come willingly. We are a full complement of staff and we have a waiting list of people that want to be employed here, which is something I've never seen before. And everybody is coming to work, working together. We have the whole camaraderie of the reserve officers as well as the full-time officers working well together. So I couldn't be more proud to have to be leading this police department and to present this budget and in here this evening to answer any questions that you you may have for me. I could go through line by line and explain the increases and the decreases. Some of them are self-explanatory. But, you know, again, I live this every single day and, you know, but it may not be as obvious to some of you. So I will open it up to any questions or concerns that you have regarding the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Boy, it's gonna be hard to pursue on anything with a less than zero increase overall with the kind of efficiency and operational morale that you have going on. Just an excellent job. Thank you so much. And I will just say that I think this is going to be very hard for Superintendent Wilds and Chief Collins Brown to follow you unless they have a 0% increase as well. This is an excellent budget. Are there any questions from the board?
I've got a question. I don't want to trounce on your momentum because I loved everything you just said, Chief. But one line item on here talks about the need for cloud storage for the body cams, which were given as a grant. Do they follow that up with a potential grant for cloud storage? Or is that not the case?
No, that's not the case. One of the problems with the cloud with the grant that it does not include cloud storage. So that's going to be a reoccurring cost every single year.
Okay, thanks. Got it.
Not that I agree with it, but it's worth the speaking.
So what happens? What happens if we don't do the cloud storage? We only have what's on the cameras for eight hours worth? Or what happens if we don't do the cloud storage?
Well, there's two options. We can actually download the information to a server based here that we would be responsible for all public records documents and the storage of that for the appropriate time based upon the guidelines of the state on a scheduled retention. The cloud storage, it's a third party. So it's highly recommended that a third party stores it. If they if they get rid of the material within 30 days, then we are not liable or responsible for it.
Say that 30-day thing again. What is that 30 days?
So it depends. It depends on the third party that is storing this. It depends on what their guidelines are for the amount of storage that they have the capacity for.
Thank you. What is the state law about this, if anything, as far as records retention?
It's relatively new, so I do not know. It hasn't been published what the scheduled retention is that that I am aware of. I do not know if it's one year, two years or three years.
So if there's none, then we really have no reason to have to put it on a server someplace or whatever else. If we have an incident and we know it's an incident that we want to keep, we can then offload that particular half hour, whatever it is, from the cameras and we've got it. I think it's worth it for us to understand what's going on here because it's not a small amount of money and it is a repeated amount of money. How do we give the grant back? Knowing this, why, why, if we knew this, apparently we didn't because I didn't know anything about it when we approved this grant, this additional 8,000 a year. If we knew about it, would we have taken the grant?
I would think.
You'd have presented the grant if you knew about this. I mean, this is like, here's a present. But yeah, after three years, it's going to cost you a lot more than even the present.
No, we had talked about this back in May 24th, that there's going to be some impacts with body cameras. We had an opportunity to apply for a grant that actually will not pay for the the cloud storage of the material. I honestly think the select board would unanimously vote for in favor of the body cameras because of the liability that it may reduce the town's liability and the protection, more importantly, the protection of the police officers. I don't think you could put a timeline on how long we should hold things since the statute of limitations for most things is three years. So I would never want to get rid of the material if we were to download it to a server here in less than three years because you have no idea when somebody's going to complain, complain about an officer. So I think this is, there's a lot of beneficial benefits of having body cameras. Number one, it reduces people's behavior or increases their behavior in the sense that reduces bad behavior because of the sense when you inform them they're being recorded, then their demeanor changes. If somebody is going to make an allegation against a police officer, we have it on body camera. So I think there's there's so many pros for the body cameras than cons for it. And I would outweigh the pros over the cons and would like to still see them.
This dollar amount. I'm sorry. Did you have something else?
No, there is a cost in that we, you know, it's one of the implications of body cameras in police reform of moving forward. We, you know, we basically stated that there's going to be additional cost. We're going to try to absorb as much as we possibly can. But I wanted to bring this forward as soon as possible. I have not purchased the body cameras yet. So but I think it would be for for the best business of the police department and the town would be to move forward with it.
Chief, that dollar amount, is that us going out and contracting with a third party? Or are we going through the consortium, the IT consortium? Would we get a better price if there were multiple towns who were pursuing additional cloud storage?
The vendor supplies that. So the company that we have chosen, G-Tech Technology, would be the company that would store that.
Is that through the consortium? Is that the best price that we can get if we're working with the other towns as well? Or is this just individually us dealing with a third party?
Yeah, the the whole consortium did not go for the grant. One of them did not apply for it. So it's actually individually that you can contract out with any company that you want. When I did the due diligence on this, I looked at three different companies and this was the best price for the product.
Okay. And does Danvers offer this at all in their facility?
They, I don't believe they have body cameras at this time.
But just cloud storage capability?
I don't, I'm not sure it's compatible with something like that. It's a, it's the, it's the body camera going into a docking station that would go through Wi-Fi into the cloud storage.
Madam Chair, we'll certainly, I think we'll investigate with the other communities on the collaborative. I do know that this is something most communities have independently contracted with, but we do have, I wouldn't, it's worth the question to be asked. And if if there is the opportunity to find some savings within that, but I think this is a good baseline number from a budgetary standpoint to ensure we have the funds needed to move forward with this.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just clarify though, Chief, on the cloud storage, you mentioned something about 30 days. What is the actual time that this is saved?
We do not know. But I just thought a hypothetical that if a third-party company only saves it for 30 days, we are not liable for it. Most companies are going to save them for a longer period of time. But I do not know what the standard is.
You did mention something. I think we need some facts here, but just something about statute of limitations. And you mentioned using that. Can we just get all that stuff together so we understand what we're getting into? And if, for example, Danvers, with a much larger police department, doesn't need the cameras at this time, you know, maybe we want to think about when we actually go forward and buy those cameras and start taking on this 8,000, for which we're not sure how much they right now are going to save. I think this, I think it's worth it for us to get more facts before we fully move forward on it. That's my comment.
I mean, I would just say that I stand in favor of the cameras regardless. I don't mind learning more about the various costs. But I think that there are benefits to getting these cameras, both as Chief said, for the safety of the officers and for, you know, potential liability to the town. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, you forecast that there may become a time in the not-too-distant future when we're required to have the cameras. And so one of the big advantages of getting them now via grant is because we're not paying for them now. And if in a year, as part of police reform or whatever, it could be very predictably put into place that cameras are required. And then we would have missed our opportunity to have them paid for by somebody else.
That is correct.
Since we're talking about, we jumped from the budget, so to speak, to the other expense items when we when we did this, which is of course fine. Item 13 is referring to adding $282 because of testing. It seems from the wording that the $1,282 is per person. And yet the amount that's here only addresses one person. Can you clarify where I don't understand?
So my goal in FY23 is to hire one additional part-time officer that is going to require a physical exam and a psychological exam totaling the $1,282.
So that's, so this one, you said a part-time officer. So they, that officer is in the budget already, so to speak.
That is correct.
Something to support the addition of that officer.
The, we recently lost two reserve police officers. One went to the town of Newbury as a full-time officer, and one went to Peabody as a full-time officer. So they actually were moving their careers forward, which we couldn't offer them the same opportunities. And so I need to replace, and I'm projecting that I'll hire one reserve officer in FY23. I plan to hire two more reserve officers in FY22, but I'm going to absorb them into our current budget and still not go over.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Chief, on either the over asked or the base budget? No? Okay.
I didn't catch what you said. I think I'd like to go back to the budget very quickly.
Well, that's what I asked, if there were any questions on the base budget.
On the base budget. Okay. Yeah, that's what I'm back to then. So the line which is way, what's the best way to do this? Excel line 286, which is the police captain wage, wage for the captain. Under the comments, it's, it includes the words contractual, police captain. So when we appointed the captain, there was a discussion about contract and the the comment was that, no, he's not under contract. What's the disconnect that I'm, what am I missing?
I think it's a holdover from the last year's budget. It is a personal bylaw position.
So it's, it's to be updated. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much, Chief. And I think the only outstanding item is just getting some additional information about statutory requirements and what the 8760 will give us for storage, how long the data will be held, and if there's any opportunity within the consortium for any group buying. But as Kevin said, this is a good baseline number for us to be thinking about. So.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will put that together and send it out through the town administrator.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd make a comment, Chief, I think you did a good job. It's nice to be able to tell people that sometimes our departmental budgets do go down. They don't always go up. And that's kind of a nice feeling.
Thank you.
Okay, Kevin, who would you like to have present next?
Well, thank you all for that. Thank you, Chief Hovey. Great job. Next up is Chief Collins Brown, who will talk a little about Fire Department, what they've been up to for the last year plus, and walk through her base budget as well as some of the over guidelines. Chief Collins Brown?
Thank you. This feels so weird, you guys. It's really too bad. I miss us sitting in those little rooms with all you guys. I want to, I appreciate everyone taking the time. I think that probably this is my most important budget that I have ever been a part of. We're at a pivotal time in the Fire Department. And so I have a lot to talk about. Someday, when I have a full-time department, I'll be able to be creative like Chief Hovey. But I do want to speak to the, in support of those cameras as well as a training opportunity. We're, one of the things that's a challenge to the police and fire departments is realistic, real-time, real-life experience and training. It's so hard to simulate. And I know that we use helmet cameras here in the Fire Department. And, you know, for instance, they use one, they use them at a fire in Boxford on New Year's Day. And it's a really unique, real-life training situation that we can show people the hazards they may encounter, the tactics and strategies they might use that they can't get anywhere else. So I definitely think that those, those are a good idea in a lot of ways. I did want to take the opportunity. Um, I did want to take the opportunity to thank, um, a bunch of people for their help throughout this. The last two years have been horrific. I don't think I need to tell. You guys see me all the time. Um, we have, um, really struggled this year. The, um, our, our residents have struggled, our families have struggled, and my members have struggled. And, um, I do want to thank, um, the, my, my fellow department heads for their support for me personally in our department. Um, in particular, I'd like to thank the police and the highway departments. Um, literally, you guys, whenever anyone says, I need help, everybody just jumps in and helps. And I think you see that with some of the, um, some of the community service things we do, like, you know, decorating buildings or putting up lights and stuff like that. But literally, when you need help lifting someone, someone else is there to help you. And, um, that really speaks a lot about our team. Um, as far as administratively, I'd like to thank, um, Kevin, his, for his support. Um, he's continued to be, um, really supportive of our department and our members and our families, as well as Catherine and her help in preparing this budget. I realize that I'm about to ask for two additional people and I realize that some people might, uh, balk at that a little bit. But I think that you'll see kind of when I go through things why we need that. Um, and, um, just again, for everyone's support, uh, we've lost some really key people in our community in the last couple of weeks. It's, um, it's really a challenging time and, um, I, I really want to thank the firefighters who don't have to come here every day, but do. Um, and are exposed to, we don't even know what we're exposed to at this point, uh, but they still keep coming and helping people. So I'm, I'm grateful for that and I'm happy to represent them and to advocate for them today with this budget. Um, I did it just like, um, like I would have done if I were sitting with you guys in the teacher's room at the Proctor School or whatever. Um, in the old days when we used to do that. And I, I kind of, um, went through, um, I practiced with Beth Willis on how to screen share today. So hopefully Deb and I can figure it out. Um, and I also, everything that I presented here, I have, um, sent to Deb so that she can put on board docs. So I've always wanted to say that. I put it on board docs. But anyway, Deb's going to put it on board docs. Um, and so, um, Deb, do you think that you could do that? To, I just wanted, um, the first thing I had is I just have, um, like, you guys see me all the time. So some of this stuff should, could be reviewed. But I think it bears, um, it bears talking about, um, for, um, this, this presentation. So, um, do you guys see that?
Uh, no, not yet.
Okay, it's coming, I think. Um, I, what I, what the, what it, hopefully it will come is, um.
Chief, do you want to forward it to me? I can share a screen online. I know Debbie's got some technical. She's, she's working remote this, the, today. I, I could, you email it, I'll, I screen.
All right, I, I can. Um, anyway, there, um, it's an organizational chart, organizational chart, hasn't changed in years. Um, it's, um, really lean. I have myself a captain, uh, a full-time lieutenant and two on-call lieutenants and the rest are, uh, uh, two full-time firefighters and the rest are people that are on call. So that's what, that's, um, our, the organizational chart that we have. Um, the, the next thing I have to, I want to send to you because, um, I want to make sure that you have it. Because, um, you, you guys, like I said, you see me all the time and, um, I, um, and I like to say I'm a coupon, well, I do like to say I'm a coupon shopper. I'm a coupon shopper. And, um, I wanted to, I wanted to show you, Kevin, I just sent you the, um, the, um, the outline. But we have, um, I wanted to show you how committed we are to being efficient, effective, uh, not only just for the fire department, for the town itself. Um, and so I, um, with Catherine's help, I went back and I looked at the grants that we have applied for and the funds that we have gotten reimbursed for, for the fire department and for the town of Topsfield since fiscal year 19. So here it comes. Oh, look at that. Um, oh my word, there you go. And so, um, so that's, all this stuff is on board docs as well. But to, in a, in a nutshell, those are all, those are all different things. Here's their organizational chart. Um, you can see my practice didn't work. Um, but so in, since fiscal 29, since fiscal 19, we've brought, um, $314,028 to the fire department and $169,006 to the town of Topsfield just in grants, um, grants and, um, reimbursement such as, um, FEMA reimbursement for the, um, COVID. And so, um, I think that's important that, that we've been able to do that. And that doesn't even speak to the amount of, um, grants that we've applied for and not have gotten. Um, our volume of calls, the, the problem, the problem remains the same problem that it's been since I've been chief and way before that, that we are expected to perform a 24-hour service and respond to emergencies on a 24-hour basis, but we're only staffed 12 hours a day. And so every year, uh, volume of calls are increasing. And, um, last year we hit over our 1,600 emergency calls. So that's just emergency calls. About a little bit over, this, um, actually this one right here is perfect if you could show that. This shows you the emergency runs is the, um, oops, the emergency runs is the bottom graph and the top one shows your staffing. So our, the blue line is career staff state. It's been the same since 2005. I was hired full-time, um, in 2005 and that was the time when the town of Topsfield, they had had staggered three firefighters that covered weekdays from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And so in 2005, when I got hired, that was when we started to cover weekend days. And that was the last, 2005 was the last time our full-time staff increased. Since that time, our call volume has increased 100%. So this just shows that our, our call volume has increased. I can give you the, the specific numbers if you need it. Um, about, if you wanted to break down, about 56% of the calls are medical, the rest are, uh, fire hazardous materials and stuff like that. Um, and then the red line on the top is the call firefighters staffing. I know in one year it's really high, but it's, there was a lot of turnover in that year where people retired and we hired a bunch of people. So like, if you look at the annual report, it looks like we had a lot of people, but they came and went through the year. So, um, that's just to give you a, an idea of our, our, our staffing hasn't grown in, um, to match our call volume. Um, I included in the documents from board documents, an article about, uh, the national problem, which I've spoken about it before, but the national problem of call firefighters and, um, that, that it doesn't exist anymore. Um, and it goes into why some of that is. And it's a lot of the reasons, the same reasons that people in any industry are having trouble getting people. But, um, in particular in the fire service, the old days of like, even when I started, people would, uh, hang out here on a Saturday morning, waiting for a call, working on the trucks. None of that stuff happens now. People are pulled in too many directions. They're spending time with their families and things like that. So, um, and so, um, here we are. And so just to kind of touch base is to some of the things that we've done to try to increase our call, uh, firefighters, because that's really the large majority of our department. Some of the things what we've done, we've had, um, we have, um, well, we started out with sixth grade with, uh, work a day. We bring them in here and start them young, try to get them interested. We have an ex, a really active explorers program that pulls, um, young people from all over the Essex County and beyond. And we actually have a lot of our firefighters that have gone through that program and we've really been lucky to have them. I wrote a letter to every paramedic and EMT that was licensed in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that listed their residence as in Topsfield to try to, um, get some more people. We posted some stuff on Facebook. We got hundreds of interactions and result, which resulted into 20 applications, six interviews, and ultimately four new qualified, call firefighters with, with what only remains is one of them. So it's, um, it's something that people really, a lot of times are really interested in, really want to help their community. But once they realize what it actually entails and how sometimes very un-flattering a job is, um, they're not able to maintain the, um, training and the other, um, requirements that we have. So it, to, to tell you how, uh, uh, like a global problem this is, last week I met with the, uh, fire chiefs in Peabody, Danvers and Middleton to kind of talk about what was happening in the area and how could we more creatively staff our departments. And, um, this morning I received an email from the Newbury chief, kind of reaching out to Georgetown Groll and myself, Merrimack Rowley, with the same thing, how could we more creatively service our people? Because we all have the same problem. We don't have enough call firefighters to staff our nights and weekends and to augment our daily staff. Um, during the last four budget cycles, uh, we have proposed incremental changes to address the lack of response at night. And so I did, um, really to, take a lot of thought into that. And that, that was because I don't, didn't believe four years ago, the right thing to do was to jump in and say, we need all, we need a whole bunch of new full-time firefighters. I believe that we should try other options first. And so just as a, to recap, um, you'll know, you'll, previous to this, previous to us doing that four years ago, for 18 years or so, uh, members of the fire department who lived in Topsfield took a vehicle home before it was an old Crown Vic. And then it was a Tahoe or whatever. And we would, uh, commit to responding from home to incidences that happened on the night shift. So the group of us would rotate through. We were never compensated. We, um, we, uh, served the town well. The town benefited tremendously from our service. And, um, it got to the point though where our calls were so, there were so many calls that we were having people, uh, and that's myself included, who are working 96 hours straight for the town of Topsfield, whether being on call and in shift, uh, work. So, um, ultimately, people don't want to do that. So we lost, um, people didn't want to do that program and they didn't want to not be compensated for their time. So, um, what we started out first was if you remember, we had three people, we offered them $50 a night to be available to respond. So that means they would forego a trip to Market Basket or a soccer game or whatever, but they would, uh, say they would come to a call. They wouldn't be at the station, but they said they would be available. That was a little bit successful, of course. Anything was better than what we were doing. Um, the next, the next time we, um, to try to improve service still, we were, um, we got the staffing, the funding for staffing, the, um, nighttime evening shift from 6:00 PM to midnight, Sunday through Thursday night and then Friday and Saturday night, the whole night. So we got that. And then the following year, we got the funding for staffing with a mixture of, uh, full-time and call firefighters, the 12-hour night shift. And so, um, going through all of those processes, again, they were purposeful and deliberate. And they were each approved, they went through the select board, the finance committee, and ultimately the town meeting process. Um, so here we are, we have, um, funding that we, um, can put people in the station at nighttime and we still have about 10% of the nights not covered. So there's two shifts at night there, um, from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And about 10% of them aren't covered. So that means either someone works alone or there's nobody in the station. So we still have that lack of a guaranteed response. That's the, that's the ultimate problem that we're trying to solve. So, um, here, the, in this budget, I'm proposing to add two full-time firefighters to the town of Topsfield budget. And, um, we, um, in speaking with both of our collective bargaining, um, groups, um, there's a commitment to staffing the station full-time, 24 hours a day, ma- and maintaining the 42-hour work week. So they work, uh, an average of 42 hours a week over eight-week cycle. So they're committed to that because anything we talk about here, as far as staffing and scheduling, of course, is subject to collective bargaining. Um, and so we're really trying to do the best for everyone. I wanted to make it safer for our staff, but ultimately safer for the community. And having these two new employees will guarantee us a response for, that is predictable. So a skill set that's predictable and, um, a, an experience that's predictable for nighttime response. And at least they can get, again, not meeting a minimum standard or safety standard, but at least getting, um, people who are scheduled to be in the station, in the station and not trying to fill shifts. Not that they're volunteer, but having people volunteer to fill shifts that they necessarily, um, aren't interested in because, um, they have, they're working their other full-time job. They have a family and they have other interests. So, um, with that being said, that's the impetus behind, um, the big ask, which is, um, the two full-time firefighters and, um, and the closing allowance that go with them. And so, um, that's, that's pretty much the exciting part of it. The rest of it is realignment of, um, uh, line items, accounts, and then adding, um, more money for professional services for ambulance billing, which is a, we have a con- contract with professional ambulance. We pay, um, 4% of our receipts. So as our, the, that, um, graph that Kevin's showing you, as our receipts have gone up, our costs go up for that. And additionally, our disposable equipment, our durable, our medical equipment that we use on calls, uh, exactly the same as our call volume goes up, that equipment goes up. So both of those and looking at them have been underfunded for a couple of years. And this will, the, um, increasing the items in the, in those lines will bring those into, more into line. Um, and the, the last thing was with the electricity, we, in, um, the one, one of the interesting things from the Green Community Grant that we realized is that our, uh, electric use in the fire station increased by 50%, which is, uh, makes sense to me because we're, we're in the station 50% more. Um, and that's why we took some of the money out of, um, vehicle maintenance and put it into electricity. Um, so we're still, we've, um, we've been really lucky with the Green Communities, trying to, uh, make things more efficient here. And we'll continue to do that. So, uh, we're, are few people with, um, 100% increase in the calls are trying to do the best they can. Um, they're doing, I, I think hero's work, that's what they're doing. And, um, I would be happy at any time to talk to anyone if anyone has any questions. But, um, now is the time, we're at a, a really pivotal point for the town, I think, in public safety. And I think it's really important, we can't go on like we are with the nights not covered. And we need to have a predictable, um, trained response at night. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions. I can't believe I might have even talked longer than Chief Hubby. Yikes. Um, but if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I have a lot more data. I just didn't want to be ridiculous with the data. I know it's important and I can provide it. I just didn't want to overwhelm people.
Thank you, Chief.
Lynn, we can't hear you.
It's a little funky. Yeah, can't hear you, Lynn.
You can't hear me now?
No, I can, yes.
Okay, sorry. I was probably too far back. I'm just, um, kind of level set on the revenue component for the ambulance billing. So if the, um, billing is going up $8,100 and it's 4% of revenues, does that mean we're anticipating the revenues are going to go up 202,000 over fiscal year 22? From 440 up to like 640?
Um, Catherine has, as Kevin's trying to get to it, Catherine has projected out the, um, she, well, she did all our old, uh, revenue and then she projected out to four, to project it for this year. Um, we're definitely seeing, like I said, we're seeing an increase in call volume, uh, all of them, medical and fire calls. And, um, we are, um, you know, we, we only have a couple of months' data so far from Pro EMS to see what our return rate and things like that are. But, um, you know, our, we, when we, we switched to them, um, and we, we anticipate seeing a, um, an increase in our revenue.
So it must be, I mean, because it, it sounds like it's just like a pure math equation. So maybe Catherine, you could answer.
It is also under, underfunded before, so.
Did we not know what the dollar amount was? Or did we get more revenue last year than we thought we were going to get?
It, it's historically underfunded. So in, in FY21, we funded it at $9,400 and the actual cost was over 16,000. So that was based on actuals. When we were going into the FY22 budget, we didn't have those numbers, but we did go up on the budget request to 11,900. So, um, so in FY22, the budget is 11,900 and we've spent over $5,000 through, um, through November. So we're trying to get this, this in line with, with, so we don't have to keep coming back every year with same, with the same request on this.
So what part are we not, uh, do we not have our arms around? Is it 4% of billing is what the charge is? Or is the amount that's coming in for revenue the, the moving piece? I mean, it seems like it's kind of a straightforward math equation.
It's not, yeah, it's not. It's, it's the amount of revenue coming in. It's 4% of that. So, um, it's, you know, depending on people's negotiated rates and everything like that. Um, so, and I, I think that we, we also talked to Catherine, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but we, we talked about trending and we're really starting to trend. This is, this is our, you know, first full-time year doing this and, um, to see where we're at.
Okay, so if, if we got $440,000 in revenue, which is what's projected for fiscal year 22, 4% of that would be 17,600 is what we would have to pay in billing expenses, right?
Yes.
And yet in our budget, we have eleven thousand nine hundred?
The last, what was some of what you said?
Um, so for fiscal year twenty-two, we projected four hundred and forty thousand in revenue for the ambulances. Four percent of that, whi- which is the billing cost, would be seventeen thousand, six hundred. But it sounds like we only have eleven thousand, nine hundred in fiscal year twenty-two budgeted? I'm just wondering why we didn't just take four percent of the revenue and put that in as the line item?
We, we actually thought in, in going into from twenty-two to, um, going into from twenty-one to twenty-two, that we had leveled funded the revenues. Um, not expecting that the revenues would increase based on today's revenues for, um, for F Y twenty-two through November thirtieth, it looks like it's going to be four hundred and forty. Um, if you had asked me a year ago what the revenues would have been, I would have thought they would, would have been right around the four hundred range, thinking that we topped out.
Okay, so what are we projecting for fiscal year twenty-three for revenue?
At some point, this is going to top out. So I, I, and I think that, um, you know, unless we're adding an ambulance, um, or, you know, uh, maybe, maybe more personnel does change the number as well. Um, but I would say, I, I, I'm thinking that we're going to be in the same ballpark.
Four forty?
Twenty-two.
Okay, so then we can make sure we're not underfunded by just doing four forty times four percent and putting seventeen thousand, six hundred in the bin, billing bucket?
I'm just looking to see what we, um, requested so far. So, yes, so we have, we have eleven thousand and we asked for eighty-one hundred dollars more.
Okay.
So that, that was the, that was the thought behind it.
So it brings up to twenty thousand, so it gives us a little bit of leeway if we go over four forty.
And, and tho- the, the same thought went behind also the medical supplies and equipment. We looked at the last six years, um, for what the medical supplies were. The, the problem with that is that with all the FEMA and the CARES funds, we were able to offset a lot of those numbers. So they're, they're a little bit skewed in, in that sense.
Okay, and so, um, Chief, we had funded some additional shifts, call firefighter shifts, we had them in the budget, but ten percent, we just couldn't get people to come in, so we didn't spend that money. Is some of that money still in the budget to support the request for the additional one hundred and thirty-five thousand?
Lynn, Lynn.
Junior guys?
Lynn, your microphone is very directional. Whenever you turn your head sideways, we can't hear you.
I'm so sorry, I don't know why it's doing that. Um, okay, and I'll turn it way up too. So, um, Chief, do we have, um, Marshall, you scared me there. Um.
He scares me, he scares me all the time.
Do we already have monies in the budget to fund some of those additional two people? Because we had funded it, we just couldn't get the people to come in and pay them. And ten percent couldn't come in.
Potentially, that's what I can't wait to be able to tell you about. Um, when I have predictable staffing, that I could actually do, like Chief Huby is able to do and say, I could, I, there's potentially, you could, you could cut a lot of, a lot of that, or, I mean, we're, we're always going to need call firefighters. I don't want anyone to think that we're not going to, because we, um, it's the most efficient way to do things. And we simply, um, we, you know, we need a lot of people. If there's a fire or a big event, we need a lot of people, like, you know, having, like, good day, we're out in ninety-five yesterday and things like that, or the day before with the, the ice. Um, so we're, I don't even want to think people that we'd be out, we wouldn't have call firefighters, but, um, but there's a potential that, there's a lot of, there's a potential for savings in a lot of different areas if we had predictable staffing patterns that we could, we knew that people would be here. So for sure, we could, yeah.
Okay. Um, the, uh, additional forty-seven thousand contingency for call firefighters.
Yeah.
That's over and above the two full-time?
No, Catherine made me put that there.
Catherine.
Um, because she, no, because she's super smart and, um, it's not an option in my mind. So that, that's there to say, if we don't get the two full-time firefighters, we need more call firefighters. But that can't happen. I, 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 I appreciate so much Catherine's counsel, but we need people who are scheduled to be here that, uh, can't dip, can't, uh, you know, say, I, I can't be here, choose not to come because, um, there's nobody here. And you, you, it's, it's the same problem, we've been doing this for decades now, that there is, uh, there's a lack of response at night and that's not a way to run an emergency service. So, um, that's, I appreciate Catherine's, um, uh, suggestion, but that's, I'm not interested in discussing.
And, and Jen's a hundred percent right. And I did ask her just to make sure it was in writing somewhere on the budget. Uh, and the reason is, is because we took a real close look at the F Y twenty-two budget through the year-to-date data that we have right now. And this budget is extremely slim. Um, we're, we're running in the positive by less than twenty thousand. There's a good chance, um, with any type of spike in anything, that we could be going to the reserve fund, looking for a transfer into, into the fire department. Um, it's, it's an extremely tight budget.
But Chief, you feel like if you get the two full-time, you don't need the contingency for the, the call firefighters?
Uh, that's correct, as long as like, like, um, Catherine said, you just, it's so unpredictable, you just don't know what's going to happen. Everybody else, like, everybody else's run volume went down and ours has gone crazy up. And so, um, um, so that's my, that would be my hope, but I would never say never, because you never know. But that would be the, that would be the goal.
What happens, Chief, when you can't staff the, the firehouse and a call comes in?
The truth is, I go, and that's the, such a bad thing. Um, we could get into the psychotherapy of why, um, what's happening, but, um, I go because I can't let someone be, we have, we have mutual aid, um, policies, we have, um, mutual aid set up through the regional communication center that would get help here eventually. Uh, but the fact.
If you can hear us, Jen, we lost you.
Hello?
This is a hundred, this is a twenty-four hour seven operation that needs to be staffed like that. So.
Okay.
I, I, I would just like to chime in here, Lynn, if I might.
Sure, boy.
We've talked about this subject for a number of years. And I'm not in favor of spending money for the sake of spending money, okay? But we've talked about, and I have agreed with the fact, that our fire department has been understaffed for, I don't know how many years. We tried to depend on call firefighters and it doesn't work. We tried to give them an incentive and that helped a little bit, but that didn't really answer the question either, okay? We need to provide the proper staffing for our fire department, because like Jen just said, it's a twenty-four hour, uh, uh, day operation and it's emergency kind of operations typically. And we don't have anybody in the fire station at night. And, and to depend on Jen Brown to keep a phone on her bedside stand so that she can get the calls and get out of bed in the middle of the night to make those calls because she's committed, uh, I think it, it's, it's unfair. I think we take advantage of people like Jen Brown and I think it would time we end it. I think we ought to properly staff the fire department so we can move forward with a properly, uh, run organization. Uh, ha- hand hats off to Jen Brown and her team because they've done an incredible job. They've got an incredible reputation, but it's time we move forward and get this thing done properly.
Well said.
Boy, thank you. I, the, the only thing I would add to that is that I honestly didn't know, Jen, that you weren't getting the people to fill those positions. And I didn't know you were covering those shifts. Uh, you know, I, that was not something we intentionally did or built the budget, you know?
No, and I, um, no, I know that. And that's my problem. That's, uh, the old, that's the, um, the Charlie Wood. He's the last of my generation in this department. And, um, that's just what you did. You signed up for, when people called for help, you went. That's not, that is not the new mentality, that is not the new way of, that people are. They're here for their scheduled shift and that's it. They're not committed in the same way. They're committed in different ways. They're great. They have great strengths, they have great funds of knowledge, but this is, that's not what they're interested in. Um, and it would be remiss of me not to say that I'll be at, back at your, um, meeting, um, at the end of the month to ask for permission to apply for the Safer Grant, which, um, would be applying for a number of, um, more firefighters that would be, um, if we were fortunate enough to get it, they would be free, uh, for three years, a hundred percent covered salary and benefits. So that's another, um, creative funding to try to get to where we're going to get. But I, I wanted to keep these, those processes kind of separate, because this is, this must happen, so.
And, and if I could, on the grant, the timing on that grant is quite a ways out. We've applied multiple years. Unfortunately, we haven't been successful. Um, it's by no means a slam dunk and, and I'll just echo what Mr. Jackson said and just re- emphasize from my perspective, looking at the whole of the operations of this town. Um, all of our departments do some fantastic work, but the ask from Chief in this regard for these firefighters is something I also support. I think it's, um, it's the right place to put, um, our attention to at this time. So, Chief, good job on the presentation. Thank you all.
I, I know that there's, uh, kind of, um, I, I, I don't want to say knee-jerk, because that makes it sound bad, but this, this notion that any dollar not spent is an inherent good, that if we're saving money, then we're doing the right thing. Um, and while I have tremendous respect for the tax dollars that we have, and I know that people who live in this town, you know, don't want us spending those willy-nilly, at the same time, they do pay a lot in taxes and with that comes services. And what more important service is there than, than public safety? And it sounds like, uh, you know, we haven't act, uh, adequately been servicing that, that part of, of what those tax dollars are meant for. So this makes all the sense in the world to me.
And, um, Chief, I really appreciate the steps that you've taken. As you said, you didn't jump into this.
Right.
You tried some incremental steps along the way as the world was changing and the, the availability of firefighters, you know, um, came and went because of just the changes in life. So.
It, it's also.
It's not something overnight.
No, and it's important too, because our call firefighters are such an important part of our organization. And it's important not to lose them. We need them and they're the most, they're so valuable and so reasonably, they're a good resource. And, um, so you want it, we want to try to grow them and continue to, you know, continue to encourage them to come with us. And, um, and, you know, try to include them in the process. So that's important, so.
And just to follow up, as, uh, Lynn was talking about the, the changes going on, you mentioned the word trending in part of your presentation, Jen. What are the kind of trending that, that you're seeing, besides the fact that we know something about call volume and I'll, I'll ask about that? The, is it, is that the, the trending that you're pretty much referring to?
Um, when I, I think when I was talking about trending, I was talking about, uh, revenue trending. And because we, like, um, because we haven't been doing the, uh, hundred percent of the ambulance transports for quite a while, you know, we haven't, we don't have a, a long run of it to look at. So we, that's what I was talking about is the trending of, um, you know, will this volume keep up? There's every indication from, um, that's kind of the reason why I've been talking to those, the, um, chiefs in the area, because we're, um, there's a lot of mutual aid happening. So a lot of, um, communities who contract with private ambulances aren't. The staffing problems that we're having, everyone's having. So there's a lot of back and forth helping from different departments. And so I, I don't know, I mean, I know they brought in the National Guard to help out some of the private ambulance companies, but I don't know what's going to happen in the future of that. And like, you know, like, we don't know what's going to happen with this, with the pandemic and endemic and if this call volume is going to increase or maybe we move to a different model, like, um, you know, a community paramedicine, there's all different things. But in trending, I was just talking about, um, the ambulance revenue trend, we just don't have enough, um, data, data yet to, to know how that's going to go. It continues to trend up and, uh, we just don't know how, how that will keep going.
But especially, especially in the four hundred thousand forty, that's the category that you're talking about, the one that's going to trend.
Yep, but, but, but like you say, we look at, um, call volume, we're looking at number of people, we're looking at duplicate calls that happen at the same time. Um, that's happening more and more. So, um, we're looking at all, all of those things too.
Thank you.
Go, Cam.
Well, I was just going to say with the, with the trending comment, um, to Catherine's point, we've only got one ambulance and we're going to cap out. It's, it's pretty clear that you can only make so many runs and, and charge back so much money. So I like the concept of keeping it flat. You know, feeling, feeling that the spike has been so dramatic from last year to this year. Um, I think, I think that makes sense. I don't see how we could possibly squeeze more money out with four full times. And Jen getting up in the middle of the night, you know, to fill holes. I mean, that, that is just, I didn't know that either, Jen. And, uh.
That's okay. That's actually a good thing. That means you haven't seen us at night, but also, um, just to, just to.
You're right.
We, we don't want to see you at night. Nothing is moving smoothly, but we don't want to see you.
I, I totally agree. Um, the, just to clarify, we have two ambulances, just, um, the, the outlier is, is the people. If you don't have people, we have great equipment, we maintain. Um, the town's very supportive, um, but it's the people that we need.
You have two ambulances and answered your comment is, we actually know we have two ambulances.
Yep. But, but the other thing that plays an important factor in this is that the rate for someone taking the ambulance isn't the same. It depends on the insurance and it could vary between, you know, three hundred dollars and twenty-five hundred dollars in terms of what the town gets.
Well, I, I just like that. We, we don't know what's going to happen with that revenue. We don't know. Uh, get, Catherine, you said a little while ago, it's probably going to level off or decline or sometime in the future. And, and my opinion is that I'm looking at this line item that shows that she's asking for another hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars for two additional firefighters. And we've got about four hundred and forty grand that we bring in, some of it which goes to other, uh, issues. Uh, so we don't get to use all the four hundred and forty. Um, and, and that money goes into the general fund. Now, we can sit here and debate it all night, but the fact of the matter is, we've got the money to pay for those, those two full-time firefighters. And if it gets to the point down the road, a year or two or three, where that, that has leveled off and we can't do it, then we'll address that issue at that point in time. We can't tell what's going to happen in future at this point in time, but I can tell you right now, we've got the money that we ought to, that we can afford to hire these guys and we ought to do it.
Ju- just on the numbers though, uh, to be honest with them, there is the overhead when we hire somebody full-time. And so that's shown in this particular case as fifty thousand dollars. So we're, we're ranging up close to a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Um, small second thing is that the revenue from the ambulance, twenty-five percent is going into a capital fund. So it's not part of an operating cost. And then certainly part of the operating cost, as you point out, Boyd, Boyd, is, uh, being used to do various kind of station coverage and things such as that. Yes.
No, I, I don't know if we know bottom line that this is profitable, but it's a service. It's a, a public safety service. Um, but it would be good to see at some point where all that money goes, so that we could see exactly bottom line, what it does for us. Um.
Yeah, I think back, uh, Lynn, back in, I, I don't remember the meeting, but I think it was back in the May timeframe. Uh, the board did ask, uh, Kevin to come forward on a quarterly basis with a report from our two new businesses, as we put it. And one of which is the ambulances, the other is the charging stations at Town Hall. Um, I, I, I think, Kevin, that would be helpful if you, if you start doing that, giving us the, the quarterlies. And obviously, the first report may, uh, be different than the third report. As you go along, you'll find new categories or whatever. But the board really should be aware, these are new businesses, they're businesses unlike what we've done in the past. So we really should be getting that, uh, and getting reports on that on a regular basis.
Absolutely. And I, I, we've got now, just hit the one-year mark on the, um, charging stations, which is one of the businesses. And I think we've got a full year plus now with, um, the call fire. So we've got some really good data that we've been able to, uh, to pull together for you. But it, like any business, start of times.
Yeah, good.
Hey, um, any other questions for Chief on, on her budget and her? So am I understanding, is the forty-seven thousand contingency coming out or being reduced? Or wha- what's the bottom line on that component?
I make a motion to take it out if everything else moves forward.
Motion noted.
Now, wait, now wait a minute. You're offering to trade me forty-seven thousand for a hundred and ninety thousand?
I know, wait a minute, wait a minute. I got a bridge for you too.
But it wouldn't be fixing the problem.
Right, right. That, the, 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 it's the scheduled person that's come to work, not a person that come to work when they feel like they want to.
Okay, um, I, I don't see anything else that I have. I, I don't see anything else that I have a question on. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Nice job, Jen.
Just give me a call any, anytime. I'm happy to talk over coffee or whatever.
Thank you so much.
How about a, how about a midnight some night?
Okay, alright.
I think we should let her sleep when she's not. Alright, thank you so much. Um, Kevin, next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Lloyd. Um, Chief, great job. Uh, thank you for sharing all that. Um, and sorry for a little bit of technical difficulties, uh, on the fly there, but I think everyone got the, uh.
You did, you did better than me and, um, Debbie says that everything's up on board docs now, so you can look at that.
Perfect. Um, so ne- next up for today's agenda, um, I'll be introduce, um. Superintendent Gary Wilds, um, who will cover a few different line items within our budget. Um, including stormwater management, which kind of quads a town administrator and the, um. Um, falls under Gary, but, um, just for, for just a high level, very quickly, I just want to mention a couple of things. Um, and then hand it over to Mr. Wilds. One. Um, a year ago, um, on July one, so a year and a few days. Um, the home rule petition that was in two twenty passed, um, that consolidated or reorganized. The highway, park and cemetery and water department from, uh, commissioner based independent commissioners, three for each of those three departments. Um, to disband those commissions and have the departments report directly to the town administrator. Those unanimously supported by those nine commissioners, um, and it was ultimately supported at town meeting. Short answer to the question, has it worked? Yes. Um, and the reason for that is the leadership of Mr. Wilds. Um, as, as well as the support team, you'll see Travis Good here on the call. A, a big part of why it's all been as successful, that transition. And I, I know Mr. Wilds will be very modest with this and we'll get into the details, so I'll spend us, uh, just another few seconds on this. Um, this was a huge undertaking. Um, it might seem operationally that from the outside looking in that it was maybe easy. But, um, there was a lot of conversations. We have regular, every other week, we sit down as a team, um, as a DPW to talk about how things are going. And I've been just thoroughly impressed every step of the way of how much Mr. Wilds has taken on successfully. Um, and his just pure commitment and passion for the work he does. Um, and it's, it flows down to every member of his team and why this has been successful, um, from the top to the bottom. Um, we promised a year ago, we would have about a, just a shade under fifteen thousand dollars in savings from salaries, including bringing on a part-time rec director. Um, and that's showed to be true. Um, we also talked about operational efficiencies. Um, that is also shown to be true with overlap and not needing to buy multiple. Piece of equipment for different departments. Um, and the team's having a lot of fun. I think I shared with you the Brian machine that the, at the team that. Uh, our, our, our mad scientist on here, Travis Good, took the lead on designing with a few members of the team up there. Um, they found a lot of creative ways to find savings. Um, and also deliver as good or better services than we have, uh, in the past. Leveraging the expertise that we have and the, the commitment we have from our team. So I just wanted to preface. That because that was something we spent a lot of time on and I, we very much appreciated, appreciated the support from the board. Um, FinCom and the community as we work through that, continue to try to find creative ways to do better and deliver better service. With a very much conscious effort to control our budget and our costs along the way. So I'll stop talking and hand this over to Mr. Wilds to, to pick up the ball and to keep running with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town Administrator very much and Madam Chair. I do want to start off by saying I would reiterate both chiefs, they're hard act to follow. Um, but I couldn't agree more in the working relationship we've all had. I think part of it is we, the three of us have worked together for decades, as it were, in other capacities, but, um. Morality and the teamwork by rank and file, as well as officers, if you will, at each department. Uh, has been fantastic and it has made it very good from the simple things from during storms. To, we try to listen now for fire calls if they need sand somewhere, to the police helping out to give us heads up. And all the little things that happen during the, during the given day that somebody needs a loader here. Or we need a hand with an officer here or firefighter, we might find. That part of it's been fantastic and the morale is, they're not kidding. It is as high as I've seen it in my thirty-two years with the town. To that end, um, I'm not sure if you all have the board docs of our, I think it was on there, Kevin, or do we want to bring, or can Deb bring that up? Um, just to show, unless you already have it, what the net savings were is so far, what we realized at this point. Um, while we're looking at that, I can't thank Travis and Elizabeth of my crew and the rest of the team. Uh, for what we've been trying to do. It was, it was a big ask. Um, the highway was one thing, and then when this got. Asked the rest of it in the home rule petition. I will tell you that I was a little overwhelmed in the beginning. I think many of you realize that because often I know Lynn, Boyd and others were checking on my health. Quite often to see how I was doing. Um, I am going much better. I've actually taken a couple of weekends off and not come into the office. So I'm finally going in the right direction. Um, but if you see some of this slide here, we have realized some savings. Um, and in regards to these things, some of the things that were talked about and hope for. Um, with that being said, if we can go from there is we're, we're in that ballpark to the org chart and what currently is constituted. Um. Now, I will tell you that when we get into the budget part of this and there are things that I think you've probably seen on there that may be an ask or not. Um, I'm going to come up with some data that I, I think you'll understand in regards to this. It's been a learning curve. With this, Kevin, if you could go, or Deb, could you go to the next one, please? Um, these results are something we really did talk about. Uh, there, some of these are absolute. We are finding other ways to try to get efficiencies and savings. One of the things that isn't reflected here is the savings in maintenance with our mechanic who is just. I can't put it any other way than he's just a rock star. Um, and the savings coming in, I don't have, we've been unable yet to find a software for, uh, maintenance software. Um, we're trying to figure out how to track that. Maybe at some point we could finally realize the kinds of savings. Um, right now, but we are in many of the things between the. Which I think if you were to look at the fleet schedule, you'd be shocked at the equipment. And motorized and such that we do have for the town. And what is now being fixed solely in-house, other than large repairs and such that. Just are too time consuming and we're back up, um, the line, if you will. Um, we might send those things out, but that's one of the savings we're not realizing, or I can't tell you yet and give it. A dollar amount. I would not want to undersell it and I wouldn't want to undersell it, but I know for a fact. We are making a huge savings in that game as well. That's just not reflected on the slide. That's about it on that. The, if I can go, I'll start because there's a number of budgets that I, I have my hands in. Three anyways, and I think three others potentially. Um, with the highway, we have contractual, obviously wages and such that are involved there. We have on the other for highway is level funded as asked. Um, this budget is pretty solid. It's something that we rely on. Um. Now, snow and ice, if I can, we've realigned some things, um, trying to fix some. Budget shortfalls. We now have three, three. Full-time employees that will go to our snow and ice overtime that we didn't use to have because they are now. Under the fold and will plow for us, which they hadn't been for well over a decade. So we were overspent last year on that. So realizing some of the things in the snow and ice, we just realigned accounts. Um, to try to just make that look a little better as time goes on with the amount of overtime being paid out. But I don't know if we're, the streetlights, are we going to get into that now?
Um, yeah, we could, we could, but highway, snow and ice, stormwater management's one that, um. As well, that's on page nine of, of the budget that we provided. Maybe touch on that, then we go down to streetlights and then, um, go right to parks and sem. Um, stormwater management, um, we have had historically, um, a ten thousand dollar line item in that. And I'm, I'm speaking to it because myself, uh, Mr. Wilds, uh, Mr. Bond sort of collectively work on that. Um, but we've collect, we've typically had a ten thousand dollar consulting line within that. Um, and we had somebody from town helping us provide what's known as the MS four requirements for stormwater. Um, their DEP regulations that we need to comply with. It's a multi-year phased requirements that the town meets. Um, we've been providing, um, documentation to the state, um. At the ten thousand dollar annual amount, which as you could see on the historical has never increased. Um, we are needing to transition to a new consultant to help us maintain complacency going forward. Um, and as such, the discounted rate that we've been receiving from the in-house or the in-town consultant. Uh, we expect to grow significantly. So there is an over ask for ten thousand dollars on that. Um, as a placeholder, one of the things that we realized though, is there's some work historically that need around MS four that still needs to be completed. We have contracted right now with a consultant to assess what we've done over the last handful of years around MS four. Ensuring that we meet all the requirements. Um, our belief is there's going to be some need and so. Not reflected in the operating budget, but worth noting, in order to meet the MS four requirements, we do believe we'll need a separate warrant article. For one-time infusion of free cash to help us meet the requirements on the MS four. We'll ta- we could talk more about that particular later, but for right now, that's what the additional, additional ten thousand represents in the stormwater. Is the need to grow that. Uh, we've got quotes from different vendors, up to fifty thousand dollars annually. To do this work, um, we believe with a one-time infusion of funds, we could probably be able to do it within twenty. That number could change depending, but we should know in the next thirty days rough. How many, what the need is and how great it is to sort of catch up a little bit. Um, so I did want to speak to that. Mr. Wilds, I don't know if I missed anything, anything addition you want to mention to that line item?
No, I'd say that's a fair bet right now. Until we have a closer, I, I know DEP. And this has been told directly to us, DEP is going to hand some town. A slap to make a point of it to everybody in the state. These regulations have not been met. Many towns are far behind what we've done so far in regards to reporting on outfalls and drainage and things like that. Um, I think this is the, right now, we're going in the right direction. We've done enough so far already trying to get ahead of it. And part of that, I will. I thank Travis for, because they were doing some of it ahead of Topsfield over in London before he came with us. And we are, we have gone light years ahead of what many towns are doing. They've stuck their head in the ground. And are just waiting. And I, I'd like to think we would not be the one singled out here. Because we've done our due diligence so far, we do need to do more. It's just a matter of what that comes back from the consultant as to exactly what that means and what it will cost to us.
So Gary, you're not, uh, thinking this is going to be twenty thousand a year, every year going forward? This is an assessment that might be every X number of years to assess where we are and what we need to do?
Oh, no, for sure. Madam Chair, the, it's been such a changing fluid mo- motion with DEP on this. It's a, it's a tough target to hit. I think that's why, uh, the town administrator had said. With this consultant on board, we're going to find out more of what is going to be required. I just don't know enough about it. This is something, um, Dave Bond has been running. Um, as part of, uh, one of the stipends that he's done. Part of that, the reason I'm involved is highway super, if you will. Stormwater is catch basin cleanouts and, uh, taking data from that outfalls, infalls. How much do we have from homeowners that are tied into our catch basins? With some pumps and others that are going to become obsolete and not allowed anymore. There's quite a bit of this regulations that are going to change in that regard. Uh, but these are, I think, in its infancy, at least to make sure we're ahead of many and we won't be the one singled out.
Okay, thank you.
But, but I, I still not sure I know the answer. Uh, uh. We, we think there's a lot of one-time cost in this request. But we're not sure.
So on an ongoing basis, there's requirements annually from the MS four that the town needs to comply with and report on.
Thousand, that's in the ten thousand that's in the budget now.
Plus ten thousand because we were seeing a significant discount on that cost of reporting. Um, and we do believe there's certain things that, that additional ten thousand can allow us operationally to do. Um, I'm sorry, not operationally, that will allow us to do to continue to stay compliant so we don't fall behind. It's not, the initial conversations our team had on this and, and our Concom agent Heidi Gaffney's not here today. But was present during these conversations as well, um, was that. This number based on preliminary conversations with firms that provide MS four support to communities. Could be forty or fifty thousand dollars annually. What we've decided to be conservative on this is to say, let's do a warrant article. A one-time infusion of say fifty thousand dollars, that's a number we could talk more about and we're going to learn more about over the next thirty days with the consultant's efforts. To identify needs to be compliant with. That one-time infusion will hopefully get us caught up on things that we have not necessarily done. But also might be available to us in this next fiscal year. Or potentially beyond to supplement that twenty thousand in the consultant line item if needed. So we consistently stay on track with the MS four. Next fiscal year, we'll be caught up, we'll have somebody who's very, who, will have a better handle on the needs. If any continuing, if, if, if we haven't gotten caught up. Um, what other needs we might have in the, in. To ca- to continue to catch, get caught up, but right now. Um. We tried to make sure that the budget wasn't overly inflated, I guess, maybe not the right choice of words, but. Um, not overly conservative or, or aggressive with how much we're asking for and using free cash as a means to allow us. One-time infused at the consultant catch us up and maybe get us a step or two ahead, heading into the next fiscal. Hope that made sense.
Great, okay. That's probably good for warm water consultant at this point. Thank you. Right, you, Gary?
I think we're on the, the streetlights.
Right.
And that's a number which we've, as the system's built right now with no modifications or upgrades. We feels a, a close number. There's not really any given there based on our actuals on the cost to do the streetlights in town. However, we have had a number of calls with National Grid about the possibility of a retrofit. Which could real- realize up to twenty to twenty-five percent savings. In our actual costs going forward and a better product out on the street with the LED lighting. Um, but we were having, right now, we're in the analysis of purchase versus just retrofitting them. Um, which would be a purchase plus retrofit or just a retrofit because there is potentially greater savings if we purchase. On a long-term basis, but there is the maintenance and upkeep and capacity limitations a town like Topsland might have to own that, but. We're looking at all the options before we commit to it, but one of our goals this next fiscal year is to do. A retrofit, whether it's done by National Grid and the poles maintain. The ownership of National Grid or the town owns the poles and performs light retrofit.
And when do you think you'll have that analysis complete? Are you anticipating over ask?
Lynn, I, we, we didn't hear what you said.
Sorry, Kevin, do you know when, um, I'm getting so close, um, when that analysis would be done? Do you anticipate putting in an over ask into this budget to address that retrofit?
So what we would probably do is understand the cost and we've had a, I think it was maybe, it was. Early December, maybe late November, we had a conference call with Lori Timmerman. We've heard her name before from National, National Grid. As well as Faith Haskell. Um, Faith was getting us an updated quote on what the light cost to purchase would be. Um, they had a ballpark of what it was and those proposals are usually good for ninety days and then if the. Get another price to, if you want to purchase it. Um, in the meantime, Faith was getting us some names of vendors who provide the third-party, um, servicing to the lights. So if a light goes out, um, they'll be. You know, once a week they'll come through at night and replace lights the next day when they identify the ones that are out, things like that. Cause we don't have a light department, um, or electric department, so we'd have to outsource that. But those all play into the calculus and the business argument of whether we purchase or not purchase. We're waiting on some of that data to come back and then a follow-up meeting. So the hope is. This quarter of the, of the calendar year, first quarter calendar year or third quarter fiscal year, so the next couple of months. We can sort through what that might look like. Um, I don't anticipate necessarily right now needing a warrant article to co- for the cost to purchase. I think if we are able to do it. a warrant article to co- for the cost to purchase. I think if we are able to do it in a very expedited way, we might have the ability to put an article in there, again, using say free cash, one-time infusion of funds to purchase. However, if we're not, we would maybe look at some of the, um, unforeseen line items in the budget and, uh, transfers potentially working with the FinCom if we make the business argument to purchase, um, later on. It's most of a ti- it's mostly a timing at this point, uh, Madam Chair.
So when are you anticipating we'd have that discussion?
Depends how quickly we get that information back from the third parties and then how much time we can dedicate um, through the budget cycle pivoting to that to look at, see what the best option might be and presenting it to the select board.
Does this look like something that you think is, is a high priority? Because it sounds like we're gonna wait a little bit to get the data and then there's gonna be discussion and then we're gonna have to try to get in the budget. Is this a high priority item for you to get into the budget this year?
I think it's an important, um, opportunity to find some savings and the quick, the sooner we do it, obviously the quicker we can real- realize real savings. Um, but I think from a priority standpoint, it certainly is not at the top of my list um, at this time, but it's something we're certainly working on. I think it would be of benefits to the community to get through it this year. But my goals, one of my personal goals is to make a decision and get the information to move this forward one way or the other, whether it's National Grid doing the light retrofit, giving us a, a, a reduced amount that we have to pay or purchasing them and doing it ourselves.
How much does it cost us for National Grid to do the conversion? Back of an envelope.
I don't know what their cost is. I don't know.
What are they charging us to do it?
They don't charge the town anything. It's free.
We have a way of, we have a way of saving money right now by asking National Grid to move forward quickly on converting to LEDs. And in the process, they will reduce our electric bill. And so we have a savings. Okay. So all that we're looking at now is a comparison of buy versus make. We're gonna either buy it from National Grid where they do the work, where they do the whole thing or we're going to build it ourselves and maintain it ourselves. And the issue is how much we might or might not save. As a matter of fact, that, because this discussion had come up some time ago, several years ago, that is, the consideration was if you wait a little bit longer, it's actually gonna be cheaper because the led, LED lights are gonna come down in the cost. So the same thing may be a, a game here. If we do it this year, we might be able to do it for X dollars. If we do it next year, we might be able to do it for point nine times X, but we don't know those things, but we do have to be careful. Uh, the, the good news is, uh, w- we have the services. The only question is how more financially efficient we can do that. I'll take one other thing though, uh, Kevin, that you mentioned that may, may go both ways on people, but because we even had, um, emails that came in on the subject, the, the issue of quality of light. Um, some people, um, feel that the, uh, LED lighting is not the same quality of light that they've had before. But if we can save a lot of electricity, I think it's worth it, but it is something to be careful of. And it's, it's known to be an issue.
Yeah, there's different, um, what we've actually done, I think I've mentioned this actually is
We have two.
We put, yeah, we put the two lights out just so people could get a sense for what the difference looks like. I would also mention too, um, if we do decide to do a purchase and retrofit, um, Green Communities is now a new funding source that we could look to, to help us with that purchase and the retrofit, um, component of it, um, which wasn't available to us when we actually first started these conversations a year and a half ago. So, um, we've opened up some doors to try to fund this outside the, uh, the local tax dollar if we are able to do it.
Thanks, Kevin. If I could just ask quickly, Marshall or Cam, did we have a hard stop tonight?
Not, not for me. No.
Okay.
Uh, I would say a little after six.
Okay. Just to let everybody know what our time looks like. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, Kevin, um, back to you and Gary.
So streetlights, I'll now pivot back to Mr. Wilds to cover the, um, parking cemetery.
Thank you, Kevin. So I will present to you our version this year for submittal of our Parks and Cemetery budget, uh, much of which on the wage. Well, other than we are asking for an additional 49,700, I'm trying to get another employee um, to add to our crew. We've realized as we've gotten in this past year, as I've had this last year has been such a learning curve for us in what is expected, what has to get done weekly and what we can just humanly possibly get done in a week with the given hours. And it took us this long. Actually, we are still saving, but it's taken us this long to really realize and I, I isn't it to say that it was an, an issue that had been long since coming? And just, I don't know if anybody wanted to look behind or under the hood or not as I've gotten into this, but I'm very matter of fact. And what we've found, um, is, is difficult to try to make up inefficiencies. And I, I would say it's near impossible and I'm always trying to find a better way to do something faster, um, if we can. Um, but that being said, we are looking for an additional labor, if that would be the way we could go on this to try to supplement what we're trying to get done each year. The things that we do, I'm, I'm not sure if you're aware, uh, many of the board and, and, and only just because I wouldn't expect a lot of them to do, but we have to maintain 128 acres five days a week. Um, with that, it's 15 properties. Um, from Pine Grove Cemetery, which there, there are three, to the Town Hall, the Veterans Green, the Common, both schools, the church, the fire station, the library, the police station and the public works. And of course, both parks, which are extensive. And in that time, in the springtime when we open up, there are 18 fields that we have to play it on every week. And there's an expectation that they will be done where my phone lights up if it's not done. And that happens quite a bit this past year, trying to get lots. And we have some, we, I, I will tell you, we have realized many savings and crossovers with the public works part. One of which was the easiest part right away was the snow plowing, which we, was, we're in dire need, but we now have three full-time employees that can do that, that presently, you know, in the past hadn't been doing that. That's one of those efficiencies. Now, when we buy capital items such as the trackless that you, you had so graciously helped us get approved last year at town meeting. Instead of buying a single-use piece of equipment now, everything we look at, Travis and I, we look to how many jobs can that truck or piece of equipment or mower can do? That was one of those things as well as get someone out of the actual elements whenever possible these days. That machine can do it quicker. It'll add to our fleet, which we've already done. And that was one of the selling points we did have on that. Um, it, we, about the hours we have each week. Well, our 40-hour week is really down to six and a half hours a day per employee. With breaks contractually and to or from jobs and/or fuel and such at the end of the day, our actual work time on a job site is six and a half hours. But when we take that out, we're getting down to 30, 32 and a half roughly a week that we have for a personnel in to do something. We come up with 242 hours of work week. I mean, this is not approved, that's treading water that we have to do weekly, um, that we are short. So when we take our, we take out of our, our employees, what they can do, which was roughly 97 and a half, we are still short 145 hours a week. So every week, everything gets backed up and keeps going. And then now that snowball is going downhill. Um, in that regard, we try to focus on things at the time that we're trying to get. If we, if we focus too much on one, we're now letting something else go. Uh, imagine, and I, it, it's difficult. And this is a terrible time to have to ask this. We are, we are getting efficiencies. We're doing a much better job. This is just something as Travis and I have gotten into this and none of this is inflated numbers. This is bare bones. Any of these hours I factor in right now, don't even include the average 41, 41 hour, excuse me, 41 few at roughly two per, two up, two, two employees, either two employees or three employees, depending on ash burial or full burial that takes eight hours each day. Now you add that into the mix as well. It takes away from maintenance programs that we can't get done while the phone starts to ring. Why aren't you doing this? Now, I think they've treaded water for so long and now that I've gotten into this, not about, I, I, I'm trying to save money, but we're trying to approve things at the same time. I don't think treading water and some of the safety things that I see with our parks, we have parks, the town invites people and residents to come to them. There is a certain standard that should be met. I don't believe that we're meeting that. And that bothers me because I am, no, I don't live here, but I grew up here. I want to leave it in a better place. Now, with that being said, I know it's an ask of an employee here in the worst of times, really, when we're trying to do level funding. But I, the data backs this up. This is something we need to help us get over the hump going forward. Now, we, if we do, we're, we're going to realize a shortfall with no summer help, uh, if you will. But we may do that with cemetery funds off to the side that we can use for someone to help out. We have considerations in our crew. Right now, there's something we can all talk offline at some point in greater depth as to why this, one of the issues that's, that's plaguing us right now. Um, but with that being said, I don't know if you realize the amount of hours it takes to do all these in a week. The, the conversation would be, well, does it have to get done weekly? Imagine over 1,500 gravestones that have to get string trimmed. Some of you may still string trim and hate it. Some love it, but imagine doing 1,500 of them each week trying to do that. That takes a lot of man-hours for us to do. For example, in Pine Grove Cemetery, it's 37 acres. What we do right now, maintain three workers, two days each to mow. That's 48 hours. Workers, two and a half days total of 60 hours, one piece of property. Uh, it goes down this list of, and that doesn't factor in the amount of time at Pie Brook Park and Clock Park, which we have a certain standard to withhold there. We've got T A A, they're banging the doors down is why we're not doing better in that regard. I can't make people up. I can only get so much done. We spent a great deal of time last year so focused on those things from the park side, our highway stuff suffered that you all wouldn't put us because it's infrastructure things, it's roadside, um, treatment or infrastructure as drainage, catch basins, outfalls, things that suffered because we were trying to put down and trying to do this a little better. And all of this does not come, it, it's not free. I, I guess it comes down to what are we trying to provide for the residents to talk to and people we ask to come? Um, for that matter, that reason tonight, I'm asking to try to get a one more full-time labor added to our workforce to try to help us get ahead of these things going forward. A person would realize year-round other savings that would help us plowing, um, winter things that we would do. Typically, we don't have the time for, um, that we may try to do. So with that being said, that is why you're seeing that ask tonight.
Gary, um, two questions for you first. It sounds like this isn't something that changed this year, but we have been in the hole for many years doing bare, bare bottom kind of maintenance and support. So there's nothing significant that changed this year.
You're, Madam Chair, you're absolutely right. I'm trying to be respectful of all parties. But I, you know, when we get into this and I was asked to do this and we take a look, I have to, you, you know, I have to call it as I see it. These things were just water. Yeah, you know, I could go on about Clock Park is, well, I'm, so that's at least 45 years. That's been, because I played there when I was, uh, I think 10 or 11. The landfill is 30 and those surfaces have never been taken out of service, never rejuvenated that I, that I'm aware of. And I've worked in town for 32 years now in the police department. Um, some of those things have never been done. We got playing surfaces that are all over the place. If you tried to run a left field on any number of our landfill ballfields, you might break an ankle. Um, those are things that I see that I wouldn't expect others to see unless they went into these areas or had children or grandchildren that were there. So I'm, I, you know, this is something is not a long time, it, it's a long time coming. I just don't think anybody either didn't want it or just hadn't been made this is the best way I could put that. Um, this is.
One, one other question, Gary. Does this have anything to do with the reorg? If we had not reorg, would this situation still exist and you would still be coming to say, we need an additional labor?
If I had been hired solely and this was not the reorg and I was your new Park and Cemetery Superintendent, I would still be trying to beg for this ask.
Okay. Um, I, I'd like to add a little bit to that. Um, the reorganization of this, uh, of these departments uh, was a really tough thing to do. Um, and, and I am of the opinion that it wouldn't, it, and I, I'm, I'm of the opinion it's worked out very well. Uh, Gary and Travis have done a great job and I'm of the opinion that things wouldn't be functioning as well if we didn't have those two guys on the staff when that reorganization was done. Uh, one, Lynn, back to your point. When there were separate departments involved in this thing, it was pretty fragmented. And I don't think anybody really understood what the other department was doing. Okay? Uh, because it was their own independent business and there was a lot of things that didn't get done. I have walked Clock Park and I can tell you it's a mess. Uh, I've had people complain to me about uh, s- 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 some of the grounds up at Pie Brook, for example, because of the settling issues like Gary's talking about. Uh, there's places out there where if you were trying to chase down a fly ball, you could break a leg probably. Um, there's a lot of things that's gotta be cleaned up in my opinion. And these guys are now on the front lines of trying to take care of all of them and all of it is coming to a head right now. They're seeing things that didn't get done in the past. That's really what, I think that's what's going on here.
Thank you, Boyd. I, I did want to make the point because just last year, we had gone to people to say this will result in efficiencies, the reorg will. This is a good thing to do. Uh, we're gonna, um, find, you know, cost savings, et cetera. So I wanted to make clear that this is a very different issue that would have existed regardless and it has nothing to do with our falling down on our commitment to find those savings and to make this efficient. This would have existed regardless.
Marshall might be able to share some more down there. There were some things that just weren't getting, weren't, weren't getting done in my opinion.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's a hundred percent that there was always a question about, uh, funding, uh, for Park and Cemetery. Um, and a lot of times the focus was more on cemetery than park. Um, just because there was always a concern about, about funding. Again, I, I think it kind of goes back to what we talked about before, that there's this, you know, immediate idea oftentimes that a saved dollar is, is an inherent good. And I think that the state of the fields is, is kind of the, the end result of too many saved dollars without a, a look toward the future.
Gary, did you say that the, uh, the new employee would also be helpful with snow plowing responsibilities?
I would, yes. Uh, one, whoever we would hire in that regard, it would be a true year-round employee that we would use in, in all aspects, just as if any of the current crew, as they retire, will replace. We're going to be their public works employees. We're still a little fragmented, but the crew's working very well through this transition of doing cross-training, if you will, or cross-jobs with other departments. But there's even more of a realization as the workforce turns over, the people we hire are going to be public works employees. They will do all of it. And there is a little bit here and there of that, well, no, I'm a highway worker. So much you can do with that. If I can, and if I answer that right, Ken, and if I can, before I forget to Madam Chair's point, that was my fear of bringing this up tonight, that people are thinking we are failing. And, and this pains me, but I, I look at it and Travis and I both look at these things, you know, professional lives in the private sector and construction. And when we see these things, we look at it as, would this be acceptable to our bosses? Or the, you know, or ourselves, we're the, the owner. And I, you know, these things that I see and I want to improve upon and try to make better efficiencies is why I'm asking, it pains me to ask it, but it matters enough to me that I had to have asked no matter what, because we have the data. It shows the hours are backing up. We don't have enough people to do this. And, and this would be a help moving forward. It might be a short step backwards. But over time, this will be helped when others that are possibly near retirement, we change that workforce and we get those people that are now available to us to do the public works, if you will, job to help us in all aspects of this as we continue to build this going forward.
It's a Gary, what does that do to the seasonal labor? I'm sorry, I think you touched on this, but do you mind repeating that?
Oh, in the past, they've had, uh, we, this past summer, if you will, we had two summer help. They were fantastic young men that have been employed by the town for quite some time, local kids that were outstanding. There was, uh, Jackson Hunt and Jack Eldridge. Um, one has moved on, graduated and is with Fidelity. Um, Jack is at UMass Amherst, he'd love to come back again. Uh, he may, we pay that out of cemetery revolving funds, which we're allowed to do with that. Um, this. Funds where the ask here is partially funded, um, by those funds to help supplement this ask from the town. Data now to show that that would support that. We're trying to think outside the box. It's enough of an ask for us to try to put that money in as well, because I think it's that important. Where we can kind of build this as we go forward, because when it comes down to it, we've taken this task on. We're trying to find ways to build this. And in that, I'm trying to find, and Travis and I both are trying to find ways we can realize these efficiencies. Now, I know to some on the outside, wait a minute, you told us it was going to be. And I, when I say the outside, I think more so of residents, that this was going to be savings. Yes, we are doing our part in savings. We've already, um, revealed that. I think there's much more to that. But we also have this, I call it the obligation the town has, to take care of our properties in a certain manner. And I, I just, and we'll get to this on further down on the budget. I just think the town is falling short. Now, we may disagree on that. Um, but what, where I sit and what we've been doing and what has been funded by that. I think the town is falling short and this would help us greatly in trying to approve all aspects of the town.
Are you saying the two summer help will not be hired? And instead you'd like to hire the one full time person?
The one full time person, because I think that will help us more time than not. Because by the time we get summer help, we're already past a lot of times, either high school or college, the growing season. We're already. Trying to get ready for Memorial Day, where we just like, how do we get this done? And I've said it a thousand times to Travis. I don't know how he and the crew this year have gotten as much as what they did do. And it's, it's a huge ask constantly. And I, I'd like to think that I am not lying in this regard. I look at the grounds and I look what we did, how little we have, no offense to anybody here tonight. But I, I say it constantly, I don't know how and I have to go around and look. I'm like, okay, we are that many hours short in the red and you still got that done. It, it goes, it bodes well for the crew and, and your employees as well. I can't say enough about it.
I'd just like to add, Lynn, back to your comment about the fact that when we talked about reorganizing these departments. Um, uh, we talked about the fact that we would gain some efficiencies and that kind of stuff. Uh, and, and I'm not sure that that related in my mind to saving dollars. Uh, we have, we have achieved some efficiency by using a machinery and by using people across these various departmental divides that existed. And so we're getting better use out of our people, I believe. I believe we're getting better use out of our machinery, uh, because we don't have to duplicate machinery in a couple of different departments at this point in time. So we've, we've gained some efficiencies, but not necessarily dollars. But we've also exposed that there's a hell of a lot of work that wasn't getting done. And, uh, and, and I've said for many, many years that we continued to make the job of the Parks Department and Cemetery Department bigger and bigger and bigger every year. And you can't really see much of an increase in their budget over the years to allow for that. And so less and less and less got done, in my opinion.
To that, we, we have realized some savings and we're going to realize some more. Um, and it is our goal, I, it is always our goal to try to do it better. And if we can do it for less money is what we're trying to do. I know this goes in face of this ask, but I just think that for so long, this was neglected or underfunded and was, just was not discussed. And I, I don't know, you cannot, and I don't care how fast the lawnmower can go and they're all governed usually at a certain speed. I can't make up a, I would like to, but we don't need them hanging wheelies. But I can't make up a hundred and forty hour, a hundred and forty five hour shortfall. Unless I'm out there all day and night and I'm already doing that now. So I, I don't know how else except to implore you, uh, with this, this ask in going forward. I, I can't emphasize it enough. I know it's a terrible time with everything else going on for an ask like this. But it's important enough to me and what I, I think to the town that it needs to be asked and at least discussed this year, starting out. It has to be.
Gary, are we still in a hole? I mean, if we are a hundred and forty five hours short, getting another forty hour a week person.
Okay, I know. Yes, yes, we are. And I, I, I tried to leave some of it out tonight. Now, I haven't even factored in the funerals, which take away from the normal work crew to be done. Because again, that's if I can, I have to put my cheaters on. Bear with me one second. Actually, we have with the forty, forty one funerals and we broke it down into so many, um, hours. Travis, I have it. So funerals, we have forty one annually, so it's seventeen point two five that are, are ash burials and twenty one point two five that are fulls. In that regard, so each one of those adds up to four hundred and fourteen hours for the fulls. I'm sorry, for the fulls and two hundred and fifty five hours for ash that get eaten up. And I hate to put it that way. It's, it's like, I guess it's the contractor in me. But, uh, that is, hasn't been added into that. We'll take out the monthly things we do that no one realizes for the mowing is the basins at the landfill. All the slope mowing, Wheatlands Hill, that is town property that we have to maintain. Um, those kinds of things. I haven't even added in those hours because I was afraid you were all going to have a stroke with these numbers.
You already had our stroke when Jen spoke, so we're.
I'm like, now I know why I was last.
The stuff that gives us a stroke is the increase in budgets. Uh, could I just go back, could I just go back to the landfill just to maybe do a little historical here? And gain some information as to where we are right now. Uh, we knew we had a problem with the landfill that was settling because over time the material underneath decayed at different rates. But at any rate, it did decay. Interestingly enough, um, we contacted C ConC, which had done essentially the same thing as we have done. Other towns haven't done that, used it into ball fields, but they also did it that way. Um, and they were having the similar problem. So we did have a program approved, uh, in concept by the FinCom and carried through for five years of putting a hundred thousand dollars, uh, into essentially warrant articles that would be available to maintain the leveling of the field as it settled. So we should not be hearing about people breaking their legs in the outfield. I hate to hear things like that because that's one of those things that sounds like we're, um, pulling on the heartstrings. At any rate, um, so in part, the question is where we are on it. Now, the objective was not to level laser the field. It was to fill in the things and deal with the flares if they are collection boxes essentially popped up, which was not the case, this soil went down. So, uh, do you know where we are with that, Gary? Have you been involved with, with that? Uh, I, I know it was established and I know we did the five years of funding. Uh, how we're doing on it?
As far as I know, I don't believe that was ever followed through on, but that was before me.
That was, that was ever what?
I don't know that that was ever followed through on, that was before my time.
Oh, the, the a hundred thousand dollars was allocated over the years, definitely. Um, and I think, uh, probably starting in about, uh, two thousand thirteen or so. I, I can go back to warrant articles. But yes, we, we did that and I know we completed it. But there was that much money in the bucket, so to speak, for the purpose of filling in holes. And it was not, it was a warrant article, so was, you know, we, this is to go out to contract and have people do, do it for us.
If that money is there, I would love to see it because that would be fantastic. I don't know that, I've never seen.
Okay, we, we, we should.
Or that I would never.
We should.
Catherine's, good. Catherine's sitting here, she might be able to shed some light on it.
Well, we don't have to necessarily do the details, fine, if Catherine's got to go.
His point is correct with that. And if that fund was there, some of it is, might be some that we've just used, but we all know how they do these things with the landfills. And I, I remember going in there as a child, dumping things off the back of my dad's truck. And when they close it, they use a compactor off of a drag line to pound this trash down to get it. Essentially like a trash compactor in your house is literally how that was done. And then that was their high tech way back then. And then with that, you're always going to get these voids and settling, as you can imagine, over time with field surfaces. And that's going to happen. And there is, if I would, you know, if you were up in those fields and, and see the, the slopes and percentages that have changed over time and the uneven, unevenness of this, of the fields themselves. Uh, I think I have a different, different take on it. And this is.
Gary, you and I are going to get together tomorrow morning at eight, I think.
Yes.
I'll bring you up to date on, on the, the history of it, you know, with the warrant articles and all that sort of thing. So you have, you'll save everybody some time now.
Yeah, not that we have to go through it now, but Catherine, any insight you can provide about that hundred thousand, um, outside of this conversation?
Yeah, no, that, um, that Dick is correct, that there was a hundred thousand over the course of five years. It was twenty thousand a year. It predated, the start of it predated me, but it was a warrant article every year. Um, I don't have off the top of my head, you know, what vendor, how that money was spent. Um, but I can send the reports to you so you'll have for your meeting tomorrow morning.
Actually, a good part of it was Sampson, uh, Weston and Sampson. Because, uh, it involves, a number of times it involved the gas collection boxes, as I said, that quote popped up, but it was really that the settling went on. And the issue is not that the, that it settles, it's that it settles unevenly. Uh, except in the case of the boxes, that's, you have to deal with those because they were fixed in place, so to speak.
Um, Gary, just a quick question.
Lynn can't hear you. Can't hear you.
Can you hear me again?
Yeah.
The twenty five thousand and the ten thousand, that thirty five thousand, is that to even the fields? Is that what your ask is?
If I can really quickly on that, I hate to pivot from the labor. So your, your, is the PNC Recreation Fields?
Landfill.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Number two.
The twenty five thousand doesn't have anything to do with leveling the fields. It has to do with PFAS testing, that's, that's an unfunded mandate.
I'm sorry, so that, yeah, that is something I, from our consultant who is now doing our landfill monitoring contract. Um, D E P is coming and they have mandated in June or July, all state owned, or excuse me, all town owned landfills will have to PFAS test. We, in that regard, so there is, that's what that is about. That comes online and it's a huge burden to the towns. But with that being said, it's, every town is going to have to realize this. And we're hearing that they want to do it quarterly, which is fourteen wells plus two blanks, four times a year. At a low end, I think we figured that at four hundred, Kevin, I think is what Mike had told us in that ballpark. Um, what could potentially, now they want to get a baseline, D E P does. And then once that happens, they, they may go down on that to semi annually. But it's still going to take place. I, we knew this was coming, or at least a lot of people knew sooner or later. Because of what's been going on with the water departments around the state, that towns with landfills, this was going to happen. And it's, it's, it's coming. So that's what that's all about.
The twenty five is the PFAS, the ten thousand is, is that also tied into PFAS?
That is not, that is also, that's tied into, we've realized, we're getting rid of the igniters. But we've also realized this goes back to the issue of settlement in the landfill. Many of these wells over time, landfills shift and move. Well, what happens when you've got a fixed structure in a landfill, something like that that moves? It's a well boring and it can break and it, and snap off. So with that is, that's for those kinds of things to try to get our, the integrity of those wells. It may not be needed, but we need to have a what if, in case that does happen. If we have to replace one or two, we're trying to use ones that are good and will D E P allow us to just use those? But that's something, go ahead, Kevin.
No, you're doing great, Gary. I don't, I don't want to interrupt. I'll let you finish, then I just want to pitch it again.
So, and then that's what that's for, in case that happens. These are those things we, we, as we get into this and with our consultant, it's been, you know, noticed. And he had concerns on whether these integrity of these wells are, were compromised before or not. Uh, but he has done kind of a comprehensive so far. And so that's what that's all about.
So Madam Chair, um, one thing on the last two that we just talked about, the PFAS testing and the landfill expenses. Um, there is the potential that we might look again to a free cash appropriation, um, like they did in the past when it came to landfill settlement, uh, as Mr. Gant pointed out. Um, that's ran its course. This is sort of to try to start now addressing those types of issues, the hardware as well as the settling. This might become a warrant article and out of the regular operating budget, just to get us some funds to, to get a big, a large amount of them completed. I do need to start, speak further on that with Mr. Wilds to see what that number might look like and if it's possible to do it that way. If it's, if we should have an ongoing number, but do want to make that, um, make you aware that that's a conversation that we're working. But for right now, we really felt strongly, we want to put something in the budget, recognizing that potential need. And then the water PFAS, I'm sorry, the PFAS testing at the landfill. The testing is something that they are talking about and this is to get ahead of it so that we have funding if, and when it does become required. We will talk also further about if that should be an unforeseen transfer versus a budget item, um, for the first year, because we don't know what the cost will be exactly. We're taking some such assumptions in this, a warrant article to get us started. There's different ways to maybe look at this creatively, um, to, to make sure we're doing what we need to do, but also doing it in a way from an accounting standpoint to ensure that we don't, um, that we might be able to reduce those needs in the operating budget.
And two things, Kevin, that I think would be helpful. Um, one is to have, um, these over asks summed so that we have totals by department area and in total. There are no totals anywhere, it's just individual items. And then secondly, if there are items that are going to be via free cash versus the budget, to have them identified. So we understand the magnitude of the increase in the budget for a potential override.
Yeah, so what, sorry, so at the very last page, there is a, um, there should be a, the slide deck or the, um, that tab on the budget should have a total, uh, representing the four different categories. The other over guidelines and classified fixed contractual, additional funds needed, new items. Uh, thirty nine thousand eight hundred, seventeen thousand, fifty six thousand, three hundred and twenty seven thousand respectively. Um, that's the total. It's not by department, but it's by the total of each category for all the departments. Um, and then what I, I mentioned those things, uh, Madam Chair, as we work through the, this first piece of the budget is to have the conversation and as we've done in the past. My, my hope in, from a schedule standpoint would be over the course of the next month with, with the select board and then with the FinCom, to see where the revenues come in, see what our free cash looks like and what we have available. And then looking to pull some of these out at those times. It's similar to the, the capital where we're, we're currently slightly over guidelines at the recommendation of the FinCom in what we submitted. This budget sort of won't be this at the end of the day. Um, but those are some creative ways that we're thinking in the moment that if we can't fund it through the budget, we have options to pull it out, uh, to balance that budget. So the intent is to just, we're already thinking about it, I guess is the point. Rather than coming in at the eleventh hour and saying, well, reduce here, here, here. These are some ways we're thinking to creatively get ahead of it, so we're proactive on it.
Uh, I'm just going to take a moment to point out that it's ten minutes past six.
Yeah, I was just going to say that.
Point, point to the mic.
Oh, sorry. The only other item I think for Gary that we haven't talked on, or we started to, was Recreation Fields. So Gary, the ten thousand that's in there, that is to clean up the fields that you were talking about. These unevenness and, and bringing them back to life.
We'll try to make this short and sweet. So with it, it all, it goes to a couple of things. One is if you notice our line six fifty five is our groundskeeping budget, is ten thousand two hundred and eighty four dollars. That's for a hundred and twenty eight acres. That comes out to two hundred and five dollars an acre annually. That's all I have. That's, that's just to do seed. But what it, that is no rehab of any fields. What I would, what I would tell you is that groundskeeping should be for town properties. That money alone should be for town properties such as all listed. The ten thousand ask is for the two parks to go above and beyond. To go above and beyond this for too long, again, is I don't know how you, anybody could do anything on this. The national average, people in, in, in the United States spend two hundred and five dollars a month on their yards. I have it for the year for an acre, if we, if you break it out that way, when you divide this up. And I need, and there are, and there are places that look like we don't spend the money on. Um, I, the reason for that ask is we need to get these fields, and these fields are not just, we have an issue. And immediately, when we had them down at Clark the other day, I have never seen a grub issue in my life as bad as at Clark Park. And it's in Zone Two Water Protection District, and we cannot use fertilizer as such there. I'm not sure what to do about it. We've gone outside the box with neem oil and tea compost, thinking from a Harvard study that would help us try to get the grass to grow because they're playing on crabgrass. I'm trying to build a better mousetrap out of, but it, you know, we have backstops in both parks. They're original when they were built. They have issues. These are all things nobody thinks of that have to get fixed when they're broken, but where does the funds come from? It's not there. This, that ten thousand should solely be for our groundskeeping. The additional ask is that I'm asking for the intent is to be able to put towards our fields and/or infrastructure at the parks. Try to approve upon the parks that we invite people to come into, to play on, run on, walk on with their animals or, and dogs for that matter, even though they shouldn't be in there, but they do. Um, to try to improve on these fields and not just cut them and weed trim them and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, Marshall, do you have any particular questions? I know you have to run before you go.
Uh, no, I'll, I'll hang out here for a couple more minutes. If, if we think we're close, if we're not close, then.
Okay, I think, um, Gary, do you have anything else to share? Unless you've done a great job in explaining the, the over ask.
About all the departments, I think I have my hands in now, um, one way or the other, I think. Did I miss any?
Nope. I think the, the only, um, last two is the recycling expense and the refu-, uh, the, our trash hauling expense. And those have no changes to them. It's all contractual, um, the recycling from the dividends and things. So, um, I think you're, Mr. Wilds, thank you.
Yeah, excellent.
If I could, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Kevin and Catherine. Um, as you know, this, I, I'm new at all this still, although I have a couple of years under my belt. Um, I am constantly learning and they have, um, taken great care in helping me with this going forward, Catherine and Kevin. So thank you both for, uh, the kid gloves in all this.
Great. Thank you so much, Gary, and thank you Travis for being here with us and for all the work, um, above and beyond that you're doing with Gary. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Moving on then, Kevin, we just have the town.
Yeah, we, I was going to speak. Let's see how much we can get through. In some of this, we could table to the next one. I purposely put the town administrator select board at the end. Um, just because I want to make sure we got through some of the other ones and we could, I'll be present at the next one anyway, so I'm trying to avoid bringing multiple departments, multiple meetings. So anyways, um, the moderator, no change, fifty dollars. That's what, um, is in the budget historically that is going to be maintained. Um, Selectment Department. Um, in the Selectment Department, the first is the Digital Communication Coordinator is the over ask on that. Um, what that position represents is what we have, what we talked about with the position, um, of the social media. It is eventually taking over the website. The website is going to be funded. A portion of this person's work, um, will be done, um, through an existing, uh, stipend line item for five thousand dollars under PEG. Um, that'll be moved to the person who's now doing the website. So it's not twice. It's one, money stays in there to offset the total of the cost for this person. Um, but we've talked about that position. We know that position, so I won't spend too much more time on that one. Um, I'll also, um, mention that with the, um, the purchasing and community development position, um, we're modifying two of the responsibilities that are within that, that job. Um, one is the zoning and the other is the planning administrative. Um, talking with Martha Morrison, talking with Donna Rich, who currently holds that position. Um, we foresee some transition happening in April and when that takes place. Um, we don't plan to change the dollars. We just plan to remove those particular items because they're not, we feel they're better, better suited for the planner position, the Economic Development Planner, which we put in the last two years. Um, talked with Ms., uh, Ms. Morrison, um, they are asking for a full-time planner. We've maintained the half-time planner in the budget as a new position, like the last two years. It's no longer called the Economic Development Planner. It's Planner. And we're putting in those administrative duties that, um, Ms. Rich, uh, currently has as a liaison to those two boards. Every other board, um, that is a decisionary board, um, Conservation, uh, Board of Health. Um, the, um, sorry, it's been a long meeting. I'm losing my train of thought at this point. I apologize. But those, those other boards and committees which, um, have, um, a decisionary component, have a, uh, direct full-time employee. We aren't looking for that full-time to be, um, in this ask. We're looking for the half-time, um, which is what we've asked for before.
Um, if the planner is not approved and those responsibilities stay with Donna's position?
So the timing of it's difficult. And talking with Ms. Rich and talking with Martha, we, we collectively feel it's not appropriate that that be put on that new person who comes in. Um, and so we'll be having to advertise the position in the next couple, uh, next few weeks. And what we're working on right now is an updated job description, which incorporates, um, HR coordination and, uh, a much more focused, concentrated effort on maintaining and managing grants throughout the, um, organization. Because we're getting a ton of grants and we need that support. That's a good place to put it. Both HR grants are places where there's a lot of reporting and we need to make sure we have people dedicated to do that. Um, and so, um, really the ask is, I was going to ask for the Economic Development Planner again this year anyway. And now talk with, again, Ms. Morrison, we feel we can ask for it, put those responsibilities in the right place, which would be with that position. It ties nicely with the two boards. Um, if it's not approved, we're going to have to probably look to either modifying this budget late in the game. Um, or look for a reserve fund transfer to cover, somebody to come in and maintain minutes and be an administrator. But I do think that the position's much bigger than just receiving applications and going to the meetings. Um, I've received three phone calls today alone, ask people, asking questions about particular parcels, what type of development can happen there, um, asking for our processes, asking for more information. I gave them everything I could, but it's really the duties of a planner to be able to get into the nuts and bolts of it, to speak the right language and direct people to the right places and the expectations of the town right off the bat. Goes right to our overall strategy of being a business-friendly community. Um, so there's a lot of value to it.
So this does not have a, a dollar value impact associated with it right now, and it's a larger discussion. And we're tight on time. Maybe we'll just move on from this one to some of the other items.
We could put the planner to the twentieth with the, that's a, that's a primer for you all. Just want you to know though, within our budget, that Donna's, those responsibilities, um, we feel strongly should be flexed to a different place and that there's a real need to do better and coordinate the HR and the grants. Um, other than that, under the select board budget, there are no other, um, um, changes on the personnel side of it, um, or under the other category. Um, I'm sorry, there's one. There is the major, um, the minutes secretary. We are looking for five hundred and fifty-two dollars to add, um, some more support. Um, Debbie does a fantastic job. We all know that, but there's been times where, um, with the number of meetings that we have, especially this time of year, um, and the operations that Debbie does on a day-to-day basis for our office, um, that we wanted to better recognize how often we tend to need and lean on the support under the minutes. Um, and so that, that's what that increase represents as well.
So just on, so on that item, then, under other guidelines.
I'm, I'm sorry. I have to go. I have to go. I, I gotta go, guys.
Great, Marshall. Thank you.
Okay, Marshall. Um, it, uh, there's two things here. One is, i- it says increase the minutes secretary by four hours per month, uh, up to twelve. But then in the narrative, it indicates the secretary works eight hours a month, uh, preparing minutes and increase by two hours per month. So there's like a disconnect and, and so I'm, I'm not sure what the five fifty-two is and what we're really going for. Are we going for four, for a fifty percent increase or for a, um, a twenty-five percent increase? We don't need the details now, maybe. It needs to be worked out then. If we don't have another tip, we should work it out.
I guess my question is just how much time, Madam Chair, we, do we have left? I know, uh, Mr. Hook had to leave us. Do we want to continue with these items?
Well, like this, I think we can get the answer to that offline and bring it to our next meeting.
Right. That's the point.
Anything significant here that we might just-
Talk to the mic.
Sorry. Is there anything, um, here, Kevin, that we should go through that might have questions to allow you time to get the answers for our next meeting?
Um, well, so other than, uh, the ones identified for you just now, the only other one that's, um, I did, is the Economic Development Services, which is a ten thousand dollar line item that I added under the select board special. And what that represents is the actual cost that we incur to put the hay bales out, put the, um, during the fall and the pumpkins in the stocks, which the overwhelming response from the community has been so positive. Um, also the winter greens and the lights, um, and things like the ice rink. Uh, fortunately, we got a donation for that. We got, we've been fortunate to get donations on some other items as well. Um, but it's, if we're looking to do this in perpetuity, um, which I think personally, something I would recommend. Um, this represents what our costs are. Um, and it's here for discussion purposes, um, with both yourselves and the FinCom. To, to see if this is something that we want to look to fund as we look to balance the budget, uh, at the end of the day.
Okay. This is flowers, hay bales and ice rink?
Um, Donna, do you have that list? Uh, at your fingertips? I don't at the moment.
Yes, I do. Um, good evening. So it was for, it's for the solar lights, also the baskets that are up in town, um, for the summer that we have solar, uh, Noonens has been hired to, um, fill them with summer flowers beginning May first. And they water them between June and October. So that, um, together is six, six, close to six thousand dollars. Um, the hay bales for the fall and bushels of baskets and pumpkins and assorted things, um, has a price tag. The tomato festival, I don't know if that will continue or not, but there is some funds that would be made available for this. And then again, Noonens, um, does the holiday baskets for the solar lights. This does not include the holiday on the, on the green costs. Um, I don't have those. Um, it was purely only the costs that came through my office and that were mostly supported by, um, TCP. Um, Talk to the Community Partners. However, we don't know if that will continue. And in order to appropriate, uh, I think we need to support what makes downtown beautiful and not really, uh, depend on, on TCP, although who knows what will come along and we will need more. So I'm sure the ask to them will, will not go away.
Okay, thank you, Donna.
That's basically it.
Appreciate it. Okay. Um, any other thing?
Yeah. The thing I note to the select board special is that we took five thousand from legal and put it into the consultant line item. Bottom line doesn't change. It's just allowing us to be a little more representative of, of what the needs and what the costs have been just, at least in the last two years. Um, going into-
That was a, that was a shift from, uh, legal to, to consultant. Is that what that was?
That's all. And it, what we've done is typically we've overrun the consultant and we've underfunded or underspent the legal.
Um, okay, good.
Um.
Looks like going down, Kevin, the next big one is eighty-one hundred under treasurer?
Um, so that'll be at the next meeting, Madam Chair. Um, Jackie will speak to that. Um, the next one under ours is the Town Hall. Uh, well, it's the Finance Committee, which is not changing, um, funding that the same. It's, it's always been funded. And then the Town Hall Budget, um, there are two main ask in there. We've realigned, I should say, we've realigned a couple of the accounts, better be more representative with a zero impact to the increase and decrease. But then there's two over ask being requested, the first being eighty-three hundred. And that's the representative of the cybersecurity that we just talked about at our last meeting, um, being built into the budget and the IT contract services. And then the second item is a thirty-five hundred dollar, um, printer or Doppler, I should say. It failed us. It had a catastrophic, uh, failure recently. We did an analysis on rent and lease, or lease, I should say, versus purchase and the payback. Um, with the leased piece of equipment, we have the equipment for three years and then they replace it with a new one every three years. All services taken care of under the contract, um, so there's known costs. We have known, no unexpected costs. And we get updates with regular equipment over small periods of time, fortunately. Purchasing equipment, the issue is, is towards the end of its life, typically we spend a lot more on maintenance and it's unknown. And then any upfront savings by a purchase, if you're annualizing the cost over a number, the useful life is chewed up pretty quickly in the second half. It's like we found when a lot of maintenance calls need to be taken place. And then we find ourselves with a catastrophic failure, uh, when the, when the capital's doing, you can't print in color. Because it's, uh, it's down and we haven't had the, the equipment preemptively changed out. So, um, that's with that thirty-five hundred. We've had to already purchase it because the equipment's essential to the operations of our building, Concom, and, and the Board of Health uses it.
Lease it, lease it or purchase it?
Sorry, lease. Apologize. We went to a lease contract annually on that. Yes. And so we leased the equipment. Equipment has not been delivered yet, but we have moved forward because it failed, um, a few weeks ago and we had to go through the procurement and then-
And the thirty-five hundred is the same the next year and the next year, the three-year lease. It's, it's, got it. Okay. Do we, uh, do we know how much revenue we get back on that by any chances? I know we, if somebody wants some more copies of something like that, we'll give it to them. Is it a very, very small amount? Or just primarily used for our own purposes?
Ninety-nine. I might believe it's our use. People don't tip.
Thank you.
Um, and then I would, the next one is the town-owned buildings. Um, we are adding two hundred and twenty-five dollars to that. It's budgeted four hundred. It's, uh, it gives us a little bit more. It's all, issue with that line item, it's so small and there's only one line, that if you run it over, which we've come close to and we have done, we have to ask for a reserve fund transfer or we have to go to STM. Um, so we're just better lining that, that account so we have a little extra room within it. Um,
But you, you jumped ahead, uh, beyond town hall expenses. Um, can I just go back to that because it's a significant item here? The first item in the list, the first line item is, uh, power, electric power, electricity.
Yes.
And, um, interestingly enough, the year-to-date, it, it, the, the appropriation of twenty-nine thousand last year, the year-to-date is one thousand. And I know we had an issue here last year where we, we're trying to deal with electric and gas, uh, how much was really being used. How come, th- this would seem to be a recurring bill every month that we get for electricity? How come it's so low? How are we doing that?
So I'll say very, very high level.
Batteries out there or something?
To our town accountant. So basically, we realigned, um, how we were paying the bills. It's now, it's centralized, all of our national grid bills. And so we've been working with National Grid about the, the bills and the right accounts and reconciling all of that. Um, but we did look at that. We did notice that, Mr. Gann, and we did do some homework into what that is. And it's ultimately lagged time, but I'll let, um, Catherine speak to that.
Yeah, yeah, we did, we did take a look at that. So right now, what we've been experiencing with National Grid is that we're not getting bills on every account on a monthly basis. We've only gotten two of the big, there's like, there's two electric bills that hit that account. And, um, we've only gotten two bills to date on that. So we're expecting some doozies of bills coming in on that, but we looked at, um, the last previous, the previous years. We've made sure everything was correct in terms of the posting. We've made sure everything was correct in terms of the posting that's going on. And, um, I, I just didn't feel like it was something that we could make any changes to not knowing what was happening.
Okay. So, and, and the real answer is, uh, to, to why it's 1,000 instead of something much more, much more reasonable. Is that national grid is not billing, uh, uh, has not billed us for what we've been using, so to speak. Maybe hard to be billing for whatever reason.
Yes, I would say yes. And then also, um, that, um, our heat is electric here and we're just, we're really just getting into the season too. So this isn't the high, the high point for us yet.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
But also the, the next line item down has the same problem. Because the, the gas is only at 500 now. I don't know. You know, that was during the first few months when there wasn't any heating, but, uh, maybe the same issue.
So internally, I, I, I've noticed this on my own bills too, but, um, they, they, uh, national grid, there used to be national grid gas and national, national grid electric. And now they're, they're joining in some way that like, if you were to go online, it's no longer, uh, two separate accounts that you have. It's now one account. So they're doing some internal stuff that's slowing it all down. I don't know if COVID is playing a part, but I'm finding the same thing with the cable bills.
Thank you.
Hey folks, I, I had budgeted to, two plus hours for this. Is there an end game in play? I got some other stuff I gotta get to. Sorry, but.
Kevin, just focusing on a couple of things, if anything that might have questions so that you can research it.
So planning board, zoning board, we've reduced very small amount of money just to basically round those off. Um, therefore they should be fine. Animal control, sealer of weights and measures, animal inspector, tree warden. No change in there. There's no increase on their stipends this year. Um, the only last item in our budget to cover tonight outside of the, uh, planner was the PEG account. And, um, ultimately under the PEG account, the only changes that we made was to the title of this. Which was the website enhancement stipend of 5,000. We're now seeing the digital communication coordinator, the website portion of the work they're doing is being funded through that account. So there's no changes from a dollar standpoint, just more reflective of how we're going to have, who's going to be doing it going forward. And then education, uh, schools, elementary schools came in at 7% with their budget last, uh, last week. Um, they had their budget meetings on Saturday. Um, we'll be working with, working with them like we've done in years past. And then we're waiting for Masco and Essex, uh, tech to come in. And we'll continue the conversation on the planner. We'll table that for the next meeting, um, on the 20th.
Okay. And Kevin, the, the guidelines for elementary and Masco are what? You know?
Yeah, Mascanomic is at 2.75% increase overall budget, um, for their operations. And, um, to 3% for the elementary schools.
And elementary is right at 7% right now?
They're, they're, they came in at 7%.
Okay. Um, thank you. Any questions from the board on what was presented at this point?
Just on the Masco debt, uh, I thought I'd seen the schedules that had the debt rolling off, uh, period. Catherine, do you know what this, uh, higher debt, the $200,000 is?
Yes. So, um, yeah, this is, this will be the last payment. I believe it's the MSBA that ended last year and this will be the last payment. We don't have the number yet, but we're expecting about 220,000 plus.
Because the SBA rolled off one year earlier than the, than the debt things.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I would say any other questions that you have, if you're looking this over or something strikes you, please forward to Kevin so he can get those answers for the next meeting. And I think that's it then. Um. Could we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to return.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, roll call, please. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Gant.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
His agreement is an aye, so it passes unanimously. Thank you all, everyone.